Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Councilmember DuBois. Mayor Philseth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
So, the first item on the agenda tonight is a closed session with a conference with the city attorney regarding a potential discussion of potential litigation related to noise and other impacts from aircraft. And we have a number of speakers this evening. So, we have 12 speakers this evening. We have a number of items on the agenda that we anticipate substantial public interest. And so, in the interest of time management, I'm going to ask everybody to keep their comments to two minutes. We do want to go get this done, okay? And I'm going to guess here that of the 12 people speaking, they're probably not in favor of increased airplane noise. And so, what I'm going to ask is, given that there's sort of, I think there's generally considerable consensus in the room on the nature of this issue, please keep your comments as brief as possible because the faster we get in there, the faster we'll be able to take this item up. And as I think you all know, Kirsh Associates are waiting in there, too. Thank you very much. And the first speaker will be Carrie Argon.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm here actually to correct a mistake that I made three weeks ago where I said, I asked the council to send a memorandum of understanding to the San Jose Roundtable to endorse the select committee findings. So, I just have a few comments. This is supposed to be the report of the Select Committee Bay Arrivals. It was about three years ago. And I feel that there, page two summarizes it, 30 pages, this is 30 pages. The summary is "Fly at higher altitudes, avoid noisy flight maneuvers, implement noise-reducing retrofits when possible, reduce noise impacts caused by NextGen." Okay, this is not an environmental review of the three arrivals that now dump all their land arrivals over Palo Alto. "We were outmaneuvered, outsmarted, basically ignored even though 10 working group meetings were held in the council chambers. Looking back, I think the whole process was a sham put on by the FAA with some help from other representatives. The precondition that there would be no noise shifting by Anna Eschew made the whole situation ridiculous for Palo Alto. There was no actual delegate from Palo Alto. Joe Semidien was the moderator facilitator, and the alternate was Greg Scharf. So, we did not actually have a person standing there and advocating for Palo Alto's needs. Eighty percent of the time was taken up by Surfer and Santa Cruz needs than whether they were going to go back to the BSR track or the new Surfer route. The Select Committee is called South Bay Arrivals. Every recommendation that's in there was from the technical experts working for San Mateo County with the Roundtable, San Mateo County, SFO, and the FAA. We are now worse off because of this." Okay, so, they've solidified now dumping all their arrivals over Palo Alto. I think you need to pursue litigation based on the CADAQs data and information. And so, I'm going to end with, the first draft environmental assessment by the FAA for NextGen was April 29, 2014. Some of us were actually here seeing what was going on, and some of you were sitting on the council. For five years, you have been writing letters and letters and more reports and more letters and more letters. Do not embarrass us by writing another letter unless you're going to pursue legal channels. What's happened in Maryland is very similar to us. San Mateo dumped it on us. Maryland was dumped on by Virginia, Northern Virginia.
Thank you. Mark Scholl.
Good evening.
At this time, we will stop taking cards for speaks. Thank you.
My name is Mark Scholl, and I strongly urge the city to pursue legal remedies against, but not limited to the FAA, to address the egregious concentration of toxic air traffic over Palo Alto due to NextGen, FAA regulatory shortcuts, and extreme inequities in regional representation that the FAA leverages to continue NextGen's architecture of concentration over us. SFO takeoffs and landing have only grown 10% since 2000, yet traffic over Palo Alto has grown by 70, from 70 flights per day for 2000 to 250 to 300. Why? Because of extreme traffic shifting. The FAA does listen to communities and positioning its increasingly concentrated corridors, but they are also fine germinating who they listen to. Their community man, who they listen to, their community manual says, "Bring in those who benefit if others are harmed." Their net noise reduction model to measure environmental impact is based on giving some relief to a majority by concentrating traffic on a majority. In other words, play winners against losers. Palo Alto has become a designated dumping ground, and the reason for this is that we have not stood up and demanded meaningful representation. Yes, we've asked many times, and we're kicked to the curb by SFO, the SFO Roundtable, and Congresswoman Eschew time and again. The city needs to break that cycle, and a lawsuit is the right place to start. FAA threats to stop working with us are nonsense. First of all, they're not working with us at all. SFO is going live with G-Bass next year, which will enable extremely concentrated rails. BSR will increase noise over us by two to four decibels DNL according to FAA. BRICS is a project to raise Bodega West, removing it over us. These changes all sent over Palo Alto. Which ones are they talking to you about? Second, the FAA has consistently threatened to stop talking to communities that sue and then works directly with them. I have some personal experience. We have a home in Chevy Chase, Maryland, and I'm a longtime member of Montgomery County Quiet Skies. The FAA threatened to, threatened in writing to stop talking to us, and they didn't. In fact, they paid more attention particularly to the issue just mentioned. And one more thing, pathetic as it was, they did an EA for Surfer, but now they're hiding behind the Select Committee to not do an EA for Pirate. That's ridiculous.
Jennifer Landisman.
Good evening, council. It sounds like you're going to request a tolling agreement from the FAA to stop the shock lock until we get answers, this is key, until we get answers on the impacts of Pirate 2. This is a very delicate issue. What do you understand getting answers on impacts? It is not what the FAA should determine what impacts are because they only have a flawed metric to measure that, and they don't have, my understanding is that Pirate 2 used one day's flight track data to build it so far. So, that's something that I would like to ask to make sure that there's at least one public discussion about what are the, what are the things that we consider impacts of Pirate 2 and not let that be determined by the FAA. The other thing is, I understand from the last meeting, you said you were going to talk about budget. And I would like to make sure that you think of this line item as health. That's what it is. And health, not just of the people that are currently experiencing this, there are vulnerable people, but people into the future. So, $100,000 is good for a few staff reports. That's not investment in health. And you know that health is a big priority for Palo Alto. For the people who have spent millions of hours trying to make Palo Alto a healthy and green place, I think we owe it to make sure that the investment is appropriate. The FAA is not giving attention or adequate weight to anything that they do here. It is your job to do that. We elected you not to just look at information to be informed, but to act on it. And I hope that the attorneys are going to be able to help you understand how to use the leverage that we do have available with the complete disaster that Pirate is in terms of establishing a CADAQs on previous experience says that there's nothing, that nothing's going to happen. Previous experience is that unknowns can be held. So, I do appreciate your time to this and hope you will be able to appeal.
Thank you.
Hello? I'm John Kovall from Palo Alto, of course. I'm here to speak about the FAA concentrating the flights on the new, the new flight pass over Palo Alto. The Select Committee has really not provided any positive results for us. It was kind of just a waste of our time. I attended many of the meetings and spoke at some, and really, it didn't yield anything except for amending the Class B airspace to be lower, which has allowed the planes to then fly lower over our houses. Rocket science answer or thinking there. The FAA has increased the use of the Surfer, Bodega West, and Oceanic routes over Palo Alto. I'm now seeing flights from the East Coast flying those routes. The overnight flights also have increased, and we're seeing them, that's really the biggest issue for us is, or for me, is the low-hanging fruit, is to get those to go fly somewhere else when the other airports in the area are closed. So, why are the Oceanic flights coming between 10:00 and midnight and 4:00 to 6:00 a.m. at 4,000 or 3,000 feet over our houses? There's a perfectly good route for them to use. They could use Bodega East, fly through the Golden Gate, and join that route and land right at the airport. It's already all written. They know how to do it. There are many more flights flying over our houses now, and I've actually seen some Oakland flights now over flying Palo Alto in my flight logs. So, there's a lot of things that are being done that we're not addressing, and we're allowing them to do it. I grew up in Orange County, and this nice guy have a meeting, have them send out their man to stand here for all the meetings, did not yield any results for us. Only way we got something done down there was by being aggressive and going after them.
Thank you. Folks, folks, y'all know our making noise policy in here. Please, I mean, there's not a lot of opposition to this topic in the room and so forth. It's not really that important, so please, please give us grace on this. Robert Holbrook. I'm sorry, Mimi Richard.
Hi, my name is Mimi Richard. I live in Midtown, which is under the superhighway that we've all been talking about. I'm here today, I don't usually speak at these things, but I feel like in our current political environment nationally, many of us are kind of burnt out and trying to fight for the causes we care about. But I'm here to tell you that despite the burnout, the issue has not gone away, and we have not gotten used to it like perhaps the FAA is hoping we just get used to it. It's been years, and unfortunately, people feel like they aren't being heard, and I'm here to say it's still a major problem. I'm here to represent the people who couldn't make it tonight and who perhaps feel a little burnout over this issue. We can't sit in our backyard and have a conversation. We can't leave our windows open while we're watching TV. We can never leave the windows open while trying to sleep. It became an aviation superhighway over our houses in Midtown overnight, and it will only get worse. Please pursue legal action. Committees and letters haven't and won't work. Thanks.
Thank you.
When I addressed you a few weeks ago, I stated my support as a Mountain View resident for your lawsuit against Pirate and suggested an approach to consider. Unfortunately, I found the CADAQs for Pirate, and it doesn't support my logic. Nevertheless, two weeks ago, the FAA responded to the ad hoc committee on South Florida arrivals to San Jose. I've crawled through their response, and I don't find much to hope for in there. My take is the response came from the western region of the FAA and that they were working within national constraints. The response did not show a willingness to take on the problems of a national scope, and that's where NextGen has broken. Whether or not you proceed with a lawsuit, I believe that to solve the problems of NextGen, we need to engage at a national level. Yes, the FAA, but also Congress. I'd like to see our Congress members work together with the 40-member Quiet Skies Caucus to introduce legislation that will give the FAA a mandate to enact regulations that mitigate noise, a mandate they do not currently have. The FAA and industry's drive for efficiency needs to be balanced with the noise concerns of residents when airplanes are at low altitudes in tight corridors over them. As it stands, it appears to me that the FAA can do pretty much whatever they want at this distance from the airport so long as they tick all the procedural boxes. That isn't right. Beyond these high-level principles, I have a number of more detailed proposals that would reduce noise, which I don't have time to go into. But I will say that the FAA reauthorization bill that passed last year called for noise and pollution studies. As these studies are reported back to Congress, there should be an opportunity to introduce legislation toward the ends I've mentioned. Whether or not the lawsuit proceeds, I'd like to see our cities call on our Congress members to take these actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a Palo Alto resident in the line of fire of SFO arrivals and an attorney, although not an aviation law expert, I implore the city to exercise its right at long last to legally challenge the FAA's adoption of the Pirate flight path, which hopefully could also include prior actions such as Surfer 3 because it's really a cumulative injustice. Working with residents, city staff has very effectively laid the groundwork for a lawsuit by engaging technical and legal consultants early and sending letters and FOIA requests to FAA, which the FAA has in typical fashion ignored. The FAA's justifications for Pirate are disingenuous at best. It has claimed that Pirate merely reflects the Select Committee's recommendation for woodside crossing at 8,000 feet. That's some Trumpian gaslighting. First, the FAA is cherry picking from the committee's report. Another key recommendation was a 5,000 minimum altitude at Menlo for all flights, which the FAA has rejected. The FAA is in breach of its agreement with Anna Eschew in this respect. It lied about altitudes in its NextGen EIR and hid its intent to lower altitudes. The FAA has never provided any environmental analysis for this action, not even its CADAQs excuse. Second, FAA is claiming it performed a categorical exclusion for Pirate, but it is stonewalling the city's request for supporting documents, which is one of the issues raised in the state of Maryland suit against the FAA, for which Mr. Kirsh is co-counsel, and I thank him for that. So, turning to my experience with NextGen, the worst offenders are the flights that turn over the city, and Pirate will greatly exacerbate this. It's the, the distance over the city is greater when they're turning. The use of air brakes is like planes, planes are like BMWs turning a tight corner at 50 miles an hour with squealing brakes. I have more, but unless the council expects residents to live in hermetically sealed homes and wear noise counseling headsets and air masks when outsides, when outside, it needs to at long last challenge the FAA. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Biglow. Carolyn?
The other night, I was woken up again at 4:00 or something in the morning. I have it on my phone. I record through Stop Jet Noise. Another plane that I thought was another earthquake. I had this, I jumped, I woke up, I reported it, and I was furious, and I realized it's been over four and a half years since that first happened to me when I started going to council meetings all over the, all over this area, in Los Altos, Palo Alto, writing my representatives, "We need to sue. Something needs to be done." It seems unfortunately, that's the only resolution to taking action, getting action, because short of that, nothing has happened. We've got smart people, talented people, politically savvy people, representatives working on this, and nothing has happened. I've written to them. I've done everything that a citizen can do to try to make a difference, and I'm incredibly frustrated by this process. And I'm really sad because you think in a democracy, we could solve some of these problems. But again, I've been woken up multiple times a night, and my only resolution to this anxiety and anger I feel is to report it on Stop Jet Noise. And you've got a good number of people that could participate in a class action lawsuit, I think. And you've got every single flight that they reported on, so go get them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Rose Reed.
Hi, my name is Mary Rose Reed. I live on Sharon Court in Palo Alto, which is just behind Eleanor Park. And I'm not as educated or informed as all these other wonderful people who are speaking. I'm just a regular old resident. I've lived in Palo Alto all my life, and I never, I have no recollection of the air traffic noise being like this. As everyone says, over the past couple of years, I'm like, what's going on? This is really awful. This is not what I ever think of Palo Alto being, especially over the past, I don't know, six months or a year. I don't, again, I don't track it all, so I don't know. But I'm desperate, very, very aware that the planes are flying lower and louder and more at night, in the middle of the night, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 4:00 in the morning. I don't know. It is, it's very, very troubling, and I hope that you and whoever can do something about this to make Palo Alto the place that we all love and the place that we want to live because it's a great place. So, let's just try to keep it like that. Yes, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Darlene Yabley.
Good evening, council. Thank you for all you've done to bring us today to this important milestone. With the fast-track process, the council is able to meet the 60-day statute of limitations deadline and prepare to discuss legal options. Contrary to some people, the litigation track record against the FAA has been positive. Six cities or counties have sued the FAA, and it has either won or settled. The first win was Phoenix, and I want to say this Phoenix weather is a good omen for us. There were two settlements, three cities, Newport, Culver City, Laguna Beach, and Orange County. And two of the cities had their own lawsuit that combined with them, and the city of Burien in Washington State also settled. The case with the state of Maryland is pending. It's the first state lawsuit against the FAA. In contrast, two residents or resident associations who filed against the FAA have lost. Portola Valley in 2014 was brought by residents, not the city, and the citizens of Georgetown and other neighboring associations in 2015. These were both early lawsuits when NextGen started, and we've learned a great deal since then, and I really want to recognize those groups or citizens that did pioneering work that helps all of us. Note that three cities not related to Pirate within 50 miles of Palo Alto investigated lawsuits. They did not sue the FAA because they learned as well as we know that you can't sue unless you have a specific procedure changed. Likely, there are many other cities who did not sue the FAA because they did not have a recent change or they missed the 60-day deadline. This is our time. We are now ready. We will make the 60-day deadline. We believe there is legal standing for Pirate. It's now up to you, our elected officials, to fairly weigh the legal options and take action accordingly. We trust you. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Jo Fremont.
Good evening. Some people may be concerned that the FAA will stop engaging with the new Roundtable if litigation occurs. It's a valid concern.
Don't they have to start first? Sorry.
I didn't hear you, sorry. Okay, it was a joke. I missed, sorry. Not counting my time. It's a valid concern, but it is unfounded. People may have misunderstood the comment that Marilyn Bernaldi, who is the chair of the Roundtable, made at the May 22 meeting. Based on the video transcript, her comments were that, and I quote, "Once a lawsuit occurs, the FAA will shut down on that subject," end of quote. People may not have heard the word "subject." So, Marilyn Bernaldi even contacted the FAA afterwards, and she replied to Palo Alto residents who had contacted her about that May 22 statement. And here's what she said, and I'm going to quote her reply. "I have spoken with the FAA regarding this matter. I have been assured that the FAA will continue to participate in the Roundtable meetings should a lawsuit be filed by other entities regarding the implementation of Pirate 2 Star. However, the FAA indicated that it will not be able to address any Roundtable member or public questions related to the Pirate 2 Star until the lawsuit is resolved," end of quote. So, rest assured that the FAA will not walk away from the new Roundtable. This collaboration will continue as it should. Collaboration is one mechanism that should be used and has been used for the last four years, unfortunately, without any results yet. Legislation is another mechanism that is worked on at a national level. Although it has not yielded any changes yet, legislative action should also be pursued. Litigation is the third tool in that toolbox to find solution to the noise gen, that problem that the FAA created. We should not be afraid to use it as long as we have reasonable grounds. So, again, to echo Darlene, I trust you that you will do the best for Palo Alto residents.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Lois Shore.
Lois Shore, good evening, and thank you for listening to us. I work at JLS Middle School, and I thought it would be appropriate to speak about the school and the students. We have loud planes going over constantly when our KJLS broadcasts are recorded. You just hear boom. We have no idea what the students said. I would just hope that you would be thinking of the thousands of students in Palo Alto, and please bring back a peaceful Palo Alto.
Thank you very much. We will now entertain a motion to go into closed session. Moved by Councilmember Cormac. I will second. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember DuBois absent. So, we have an hour allocated for this session, and we will return at 6:30. So we have an hour allocated for this session, and we will return at 6:30.
So the council has returned from closed session and we decided not to initiate
So, the council has returned from closed session and we decided not to initiate litigation at this time. We thought really long and hard about this, as you can tell by the late hour, right? Everybody is really frustrated by the whole situation. But after a long discussion with the attorneys, given the chances of success and what we'd realistically actually get if we won, and in the context of the regional efforts, in the end, we felt the best chance of getting relief for Palo Alto's would be to focus on the regional process without litigation at this time. We realized this is intensely frustrating to the community. We are intensely frustrated ourselves. And we spent a lot of passionate discussion on this. In the end, council determined that this was the best of a palette of poor options. And that's the outcome. We now move on to agenda changes, additions and deletions. And I think there, there's at least one agenda change. Is that right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We do have a change on item number, I believe it is 10? Number 10. It is to remove discussion of the, where is it? It's to remove discussion of the refuse collection elements. Those were not properly listed on our agenda and as such, we'll come back with that as a separate item.
We then move to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do have several items to note. Let's see, I will have to come back to the last one, which is related to the item number six. We do have, this is the Coverley master plan SEQA work. I did want to just provide one clarification as before the council hears that item under your consent. This consultant scope of work does involve the completion of an initial study, after which the appropriate SEQA document necessary for the project will be determined. The scope does anticipate a mitigated negative declaration in the scope for budget and contracting purposes. However, should be noted that should the initial study determine that an EIR is necessary, staff will return to council with a revised scope and budget. So do want to provide that clarification for an item on your consent calendar. I also have a number of other items of interest, given what's happening in terms of our weather. First, as the council may be aware, wildfire conditions are once again upon us and today's heat advisory is a timely reminder that we are approaching the summer season in which high temperatures can create potential risk for fire in rural and urban areas. Fire department is monitoring conditions closely, especially in the foothills. Should Pacific Gas and Electric make a decision to shut off power lines, we may need to shut off power locally. However, once again, we will keep close watch on such conditions. Also, related to wildfire exercises, would note that City Palo Alto and Palo Alto Fire Department will be sending public safety resources to participate in the annual Santa Clara County Wildfire, Wildland Fire Exercise to be held this week, Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday. The Office of Emergency Services will be deploying, deploying the Mobile Emergency Operations Center, the MEOC, as we affectionately call it, to support the exercise and support, provide a command post. Residents and businesses can learn more about emergency preparedness at our website, You can also sign up to receive Office of Emergency Services alerts on that page. Excuse me. Let's see, mentioned this last week, actually a couple of weeks ago, related to the Newell Road Bridge replacement project that the Environmental Impact Report draft, an environmental assessment, was released on May 31st and is now in a 60-day public comment period. There are four upcoming public meetings, first of which is Wednesday, June 12th this week, 6:00 PM here at City Council Chambers. Also, two more this month, on the 18th, Tuesday, the 18th, 7:00 PM at the Palo Alto Art Center Auditorium and Wednesday, June 19th, 7:30 PM at the East Palo Alto Council Chambers at 2415 University Avenue. Final meeting is the Caltrans Public Hearing to be held Thursday, July 18th, 8:30 AM here at the Palo Alto Council Chambers. These meetings are an opportunity for the public to comment on the draft Environmental Impact Report with electronic copies of the report available for download at the city's website, citipalualto.org/newell, N-E-W-E-L-L. And lastly, a couple of notes, positive recognition, first, the Baylands Golf Links was recognized by Golf Week Magazine, named our newly redesigned Baylands Golf Links as one of 2019's Best Courses You Can Play. The magazine annually reviews more than 3,600 courses to rank them by state and Baylands Golf Course came in number 13 in the list of California courses open to the public. Quite an achievement considering the list included four of Pebble Beach's famed courses as well as both of San Diego's golf courses located at Torrey Pines. And finally, just a reminder that tomorrow, we will be hosting the special appreciation event to thank the downtown community and businesses for their patience during the recent upgrade downtown infrastructure safety project on University Avenue. Public is invited to join Mayor and myself tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at Litton Plaza for music, light refreshments and a word of thanks, as well as a number of businesses participating in the event. That concludes our comments.
Thank you. We now move to oral communications. How many speakers do we have? We have four speakers. So although there are only four speakers here, given the hour of the night, we're almost two hours behind schedule now. And we have a couple items remaining that I think a lot, a lot of the public is going to want to comment on, right? I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit everybody to two minutes even on oral communications because we gotta get through this. So, first speaker is Sven Thiesen.
Evening, Council. Sven Thiesen, father, husband, business owner, chemical engineer and your part-time global heating conscience. Again, here to talk about fires and heat waves and PG&E potentially pulling the power because of our climate, what we are doing to our climate. A solution, 40% of our emissions are due to our natural gas use by the city's utility. A three-pronged program to address this. Number one, just like Berkeley, Arcata and Sacramento are doing and planning on doing is stop all new gas connections to residential housing. It's not hard. It actually saves everyone money and it's safer overall while again, addressing the climate crisis. Two, use the Palo Alto Carbon Free B-Smart Program, which is both an education and incentive program for those that want to get rid of their natural gas-fired furnaces and hot water heaters. It's an incentive program so when your hot water breaks, you get it replaced quickly and easily. Three, be brave, be bold, be of courage and say, by 2030 or 2035, we will stop using natural gas. Do it for the children, do it for the climate, do it for all the old people who are going to really suffer when we have to pull the electrical plug because of wildfires in our foothills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Zoe Wong Van Marren. Welcome.
Hello, I'm city council and mayor. My name is Zoe Wong Van Marren. I am a rising senior at Palo Alto High School and I live here. I have to admit that I didn't know much about the climate crisis until very recently and even now, I don't know very much. I know that you've heard a lot about this before, but I just wanted to bring it up again as a reminder and also to commend you for listening to your citizens. However, I used to think I was very environmentally friendly. I am vegan and I've been vegan my whole life and I thought because in being vegan, I have reduced my carbon footprint and that I have been, you know, that I was, that I was being environmentally friendly and I didn't realize that there was more I could do. In addition, my family only has one car. It's a hybrid Prius and we mostly bike, my dad bikes to work, I bike to school, my brother bikes to school. And I thought that was really good of us and we recycle. Luckily, a lot of people here do recycle and that was about, I thought that was about the extent that we could do. But it was that when I saw that there were so many people passionate about this, that I really started to listen and to read and to find out what was going on. And I know that there is a lot more that I can do. I could encourage others to lower their carbon footprint. I could reduce the consumption of, or help others reduce their consumption of animal products and meat. I could have my family switch to an induction stove. I could encourage my family to swap our 12-year-old hybrid car to an electric one. I could do more composting. I could buy less plastic. And I think because of what's happening now, what we're doing, it's still not enough and it won't be enough unless everybody helps out. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Rose.
Good evening, city council and city mayor. It's been a pretty warm day today. In fact, we were very close to reaching the record high of over 100 years. However, there was a recent report that released that by the year of 2015, 2050, across West Africa, Tropical South America, the Middle East and Southeast Asia, there will be more than 100 days a year of deadly heat, leading to over 1 billion people being displaced. You think the refugee crisis is really bad right now? Just wait until millions of acres of the world are uninhabitable? This is because most of the countries right now are not making their nationally determined contributions and the UN released a statement that said, even if all of the countries right now were to fully implement their nationally determined contributions, the, by the year 2030, we would still be not, the global emissions would still not reach their peak. This means that, this means that beyond that, with that, this means that we need to start working more. Imagine being 16 years old and learning that you are at an age where you cannot do anything to change how your future is going to be. By 2050, I will only be 48 years old. I will not even be year 50. My father had children when he was 55. I do not know what my future would look like because of the adults who are running this country and the world, which is why I'm asking for city council, for the city council and for the adults of this nation to make the change now before it's too late for my own generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawnee Kay.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Since I did wait for a long time, I thought I might say something and I would like to talk about-
We can't hear you. Can you-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to talk about balloons since today has a lot of environmental issues being discussed. I think it would be another thing that the city can do is to look at release of balloons and prohibit that and potentially prohibit the use of miler balloons especially. They cause fires, they're eaten by a lot of animals, especially in the ocean, and they cause havoc on our environmental resources. Turtles, too, whales, all the species that live in the ocean are eating those balloons and dying. So hopefully, you can do something about balloons, especially miler balloons. Thank you.
I would have done the no clapping lecture, except that that was the last speaker, so you don't have to hear it unless, you know, I have to. Next, we move to consent calendar. Are there any speakers to the consent calendar? Ah ha, there we are. So we have four speakers and you will each have two minutes and the first will be Arthur Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. It seems that there are things kind of rushed that I'm confused about. So the idea is that we're doing this initial study with the presumption of a mitigated negative declaration without having done, assuming that the analysis gets to a mitigated negative declaration and then you have to come back saying if it's not. In other words, instead of having an option that says to the contractor, saying if it's a mitigated negative declaration, you pay X and if it is a, a full study, you pay Y, we pay Y. And that would have been a better way of bidding this out without making an assumption of what's going on here. It's also odd that this is coming before us and was posted less than a week, I mean, more than, more than a week, a week ago, we talked about what the scope is of the, of the study. And so it's kind of weird that this is coming together without a clear scope. And also, finally, the issue is that this talks about interaction with city staff. No scoping meeting, no public input, nothing, just interaction with city staff. And that's not the way to run a Coverley process. Sorry.
Thank you. Penny Elson.
I'm Penny Elson and I have a couple questions and comments about item six on the consent calendar. One of them is that, first of all, I want to thank city manager, Chikata, for your clarification earlier. It was very helpful in answer to my questions I sent earlier today. Exhibit A, the scope of services, does appear to include, as Mr. Keller just said, that the IS will result in no impact in MND, but I'm going to skip that bit because it sounds like you got that covered. Page two of the staff report lists the environmental issues that are supposed to be studied and it does not include hazardous waste, visual impacts, which will be very important on this site because we have a lot of outdoor lighting, we're putting four-story structures close to single-family homes that have glass walls. So I think that's going to be very important and vibration related to construction, of course, because you're going down for the parking garage. So I hope that those will be added to the list, please. And also, I want to, I'm going to skip some stuff because I sent it in writing earlier today, but I do want to just remind everybody that the Coverley Community Advisory Committee in 2012, one of their key recommendations was to do a comprehensive database analysis of community needs. And that assessment was never done. So at our, at our meeting last week, we heard a council member say, we had 100 people on a waiting list for Stevenson House, but in fact, we have waiting list for lots of community services. And I don't know how we do, how we're, how we're going to do a trade-offs analysis if we don't have that community needs assessment. So that was helpful information, but I think it needs, we need to sort of have a bigger picture and we also need to look at the potential community needs that are going to come out of housing growth that we've planned in our comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Moss.
Like a mayor feels it. Regards to Coverley and the multiple uses that are proposed on the site, any study which is done should take into account the fact that this is an unusual event, an unusual situation. For example, putting housing right at the edge of the site is going to put residents right next to a community facility which is used for community events and programs and so on. Will the residents be the ones that take over the swimming pool and the tennis courts or will they be objecting when somebody else uses them? I don't think the context between building out housing and retaining community uses is being adequately addressed in this proposal. So I think that should be specific, not just kind of happen. I think that the fact that Coverley and the uses, both community and residential, are very unusual, should be upfront and not just kind of accidental. Second, on item seven, on the, well, let's call it evaluation of land use and the very poor job that's been done for years. You dropped using PC zoning, for example, because the staff never enforced the community benefits. And one of the things which is overlooked in the staff report is zoning mismanagement, which is never corrected. For example, there are- For example, there are properties along El Camino in the CN Zone which are required to have ground floor retail and in fact, have ground floor office uses. And people like my neighbor, Winter Dellenbach, have complained about this repeatedly and nothing is done. We are having offices take over retail and we are not punishing the fact that that's happening.
Thank you. Herb Brock.
Mayor Phil Seth and Council members, this is a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, which involves choosing a lead agency when we have, in this case, two public agencies, the city and the school district. And I wasn't aware that the school district has agreed to have the city be the lead agency on this project. The project probably includes all of the area that's being considered in the master plan, some of, most of which is owned by the school district, some by the city, most of the school district property leased by the city for a term that, current term, I believe may end at the end of this year and the contract goes into next year. And this other property the school district owns that it's leasing, that it's using itself or leasing to another entity. So I believe the first thing that needs to have clarity is that is it appropriate for the city to be the lead agency? And is this something that required agreement by the school district and the city is the lead agency on this? And in terms of what's required in the scope, I don't see there's adequate time for the initial study to get the opinions from all of the agencies, other agencies that might be involved, responsible agencies and others, to get adequate comment. And since it's a piece of, really of a project, they're calling it a master plan and the other, the actual project, I believe you'll find that you may have to just redo it all over again when you come to the project statement in the project section. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Shawnee Kleinhouse.
Good evening again. Some of what I wanted to say has been said. I just think that with a project this complex, you need to really consider doing an EIR and you need to look at alternatives for some of the components. And I think it's important because not doing it could, again, I said that before, could cause delays and more difficulties in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We now return to council. I have a light on from Councilmember Koo.
I'd like to pull item number six and I want to see if there's anybody who's going to accompany to pull it.
So we have Councilmember Tanaka, will you support pulling it as well? Are there any others? Seeing as we need three to pull it, we will not pull it.
In that case, I'd like to register a no vote.
Councilmember Koo registered a no vote. Councilmember Tanaka, would you also like to register a no vote? Okay. With that, would you vote on the board, please?
We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
No motion.
No vote. I will second, oh, Councilmember Cormac seconds. Would you vote on the board, please? And so the consent calendar passes 6-0 with Councilmember DuBois absent, with no votes from Councilmembers Koo and Tanaka. Councilmember Koo, would you care to speak to your motion? To your no vote?
Basically, I think the public speakers had already spoken to it a lot, a lot, but I think one of my concerns is, I guess the question begs to be answered, is what is being studied? Task number two, subtask 2.1, project description is a big problem. Consultant writes up the project description, returns it to staff for approval. And I don't see why is staff approving it and why is it not the council approving it? As it is, I feel like there has been some inappropriate scope expansion when housing was added to the design portion. I still don't have an answer to how that was added in. So that's one of my concerns. Furthermore, I think our city manager has already mentioned that it is anticipated that there will be impacts, but I think it's much more transparent for the initial study to be done and to be returned to council in order for us to hear what these impacts will be. And for such a huge project, I am sure that there will be the need for consideration of different types of impact studies. Furthermore, in the scope of the EIR for key issues that are addressed in detail includes a number of things, but it's missing hazardous waste. And we're going to be talking about waste generation and landfill impacts. That's not included in there. As another member of the public did mention, visual impacts and I believe light pollutions. What is the noise impact of perhaps the dog park that's going to be there? Tennis courts and pickleball courts. I have a few more other things, but that's the main, main issues that I have. And also, I, I don't see a master plan. The master plan is a draft. So I have clear concerns about how this scope was written.
Councilmember Tanaka, care to speak to your no vote? With that, we move on to the action items on the calendar. And the first one is a public here on the, public hearing on the adoption of, it's two ordinances now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Amending Palo Alto Municipal Code relative to disposable foodware requirements and deconstruction and source separation of construction and demolition materials.
So it's two ordinances, right?
It's two ordinances, yes. That's, that's correct. That was a, so, so yes, the agenda, in fact, yeah, maybe the clerk could strike through that or something like that. There we go. Okay. Welcome to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and City Council. I'm Brad Eagleson, Director of Public Works. So we're here tonight to recommend making some significant progress on the zero-waste front. And you'll recall that last August, council accepted our updated 2018 Zero Waste Plan. And in that plan, there are a number of initiatives to help the city move towards our sustainability and climate action plan goal, which is to have 95% diversion from landfills by 2030. So tonight's recommendations address disposable foodware and deconstruction of buildings, which helped make significant progress in that direction. So before I turn this over to Assistant Director of Public Works Phil Bobel for the staff presentation, we wanted to recognize Karen Fitzpatrick, who's the troop leader for Girl Scout Troop 60016 and the Girl Scouts that you see lined up to her right there on your left. I think, as you know, the Girl Scouts have been advocates for addressing disposable foodware, especially plastic straws, and they have a brief presentation that they'd like to share with you before we begin the staff presentation.
Thank you so much. And it's so great to be back here, Council, again. Oh, sorry. So I'm just going to quickly introduce the girls by name and they're going to raise their hands as I call their names. So Abigail, Sophia, Sydney, Maddie, Gabby, Riley, Leah, Charlotte, Gila, Eva, Kate, and Salma. And it just, they probably have grown a little bit since the last time we've been here, maybe an inch or two. But it's just, it's so great to be here. The girls are very passionate about this and so I'm going to just let them have the spotlight. I'm going to sit down and run their presentation, so thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Abigail, our troop's senior co-leader. Our troop has recognized the growing problem of plastic pollution increasing in waterways and oceans, especially single-use plastics like straws, plastic utensils, and to-go packaging. The last time we appeared before council in 2018, we made a lot of promises that led to the council to proclaim the month of May Drinking Straw Awareness Month. We want the council to know that we took these promises seriously. We hope that the city of Palo Alto will continue to encourage our community to take action against single-use plastic by voting to pass this ordinance tonight.
Some people have asked, why straws when so many other plastics affect our environment? Damaging ecosystems and disrupting species populations. Well, we thought that by bringing awareness to the dangers of plastic straws, it would lead to awareness on how all plastics affect our world. This ordinance exceeds our expectations. Please vote to pass it.
Teaming up with Public Works was a huge deal for our troop. Watershed protection mentored us throughout our awareness campaign in 2018. This year, we're so lucky to assist Chuck Muir at Zero Waste with his plastic ban ordinance. We helped collect data by surveying restaurants on how they use single-use plastic. We also worked towards gaining public support. I have some concerns about people with medical needs, but hope that bendable compostable straws can help with these special cases.
We managed to get nearly 40 restaurants to voluntarily participate in Drinking Straw Awareness Campaign. These businesses displayed our educational posters, table tents, and promised to serve straws only upon request or to switch to paper straws. Restaurant managers have told us that they were thrilled with the positive feedback they got from the customers and so many people have told me that they saw our table tents, which led them to stopping their plastic use.
We all love boba tea. It requires a colossal straw to suck up those tapioca balls, which was a big problem for our campaign. We approached Teaspoon, a local boba tea house, and proposed they start a boba straw club. They sell a reusable straw and give their customers a point each time they return with it. If customers earn 15 points, they get a free boba tea. We created a punch card and presented it to Teaspoon. Their boba straw club continues to be successful, but they are also offering reusable glass bottles. Our boba, our boba program is so successful that it has recently been adopted by Ensignal High School to campaign boba business in Alameda.
We think it's so important to reach out to children so that they can get used to not using single-use plastic at a young age. In all, we encouraged four Palo Alto schools to participate, including Gunn High School. We supplied participating schools with a link to our video, which was shown in classrooms, educational posters, and kids coloring pages to teach kids about the dangers of plastic straws. We tried spreading, we tried to connect directly with the public whenever we could to spread awareness. We tabled at the Palo Alto Earth Day 5K Run and Girl Scout World Thinking Day. I personally convinced a friend to start bringing a reusable water bottle to school. I think everyone in our troop has had many experiences like that.
Another surprising partner was Audi of Palo Alto. They took an interest in our campaign and agreed to build, supply, and store our parade float for the May Fete Parade. They did an amazing job taking our ideas and incorporating them into our float. This is another great way to spread awareness.
When a girl in our troop presented the problem with plastic in, in the ocean to us, I was really sad. I learned that if we don't do something soon, plastic will outweigh fish by the year 2050. I stopped using plastic straws that day and hope that this council understands that in the urgency to the salute, to the situation we all face.
As we continue to, to, to reach out beyond Palo Alto, we also look back to what we've achieved. We, we presented our Palo Alto campaign at the Zero Waste Youth Conference. San Mateo County reached out to us to help them with their work. So now we promise to keep spreading awareness, so please do your part by giving your support to the creatures you know who need it.
I'm new to Girl Scouts and when I heard of how plastic affects our earth, I was shocked. I look forward to being a part of the solution. We received a $2,000 grant from the Lonely Whale Foundation to make a documentary film for youth groups about how to have awareness campaign in their towns. We will start shooting this fall.
One of the most effective tools we used to spread awareness was our public service announcement. It was widely shared on Facebook and YouTube. Making the video was a lot of fun. The first time our troop watched it together, well, I think that was when we realized how powerful we could be. With that, I will leave you with our video.
It takes one minute to make a straw, five minutes to use a straw, and that straw will remain on this planet forever.
500 million single-use plastic straws are used and discarded every day in the USA. Most of these end up in the ocean.
Plastic straws are among the top 10 most common items found in our seas and shorelines.
Plastic straws never fully decompose, but break into smaller particles that wildlife mistakes as food. Large numbers of seabirds and sea turtles have been found to have plastic in their digestive systems. Once an animal eats plastic, its life expectancy lowers by 50%.
If we don't do something soon, plastic will outweigh fish by the year 2050.
This is the last straw!
There's something you can do to help.
We believe that by spreading awareness about the dangers of single-use plastic drinking straws, people will become more aware about how all plastics affect our world, one little straw at a time.
We are asking the public to go strawless and recommend that they switch to reusable products or try a paper straw.
Tell everyone you know about the dangers of single-use plastic drinking straws to ocean and marine life.
Dine at restaurants that serve straws only upon request.
Ask for no straw when ordering a beverage.
Organize or volunteer at a local river or beach cleanup.
Contact your city or county public works department and local restaurants today and give them the facts about plastic drinking straws.
Together, we can make the world a better place, one little straw at a time.
Many thanks to Karen and the Girl Scouts for helping us introduce this. Now we're going to present the staff presentation on these two parts. And let me just summarize and remind you-
Phil, you got a tough act to follow here.
I know, I know. That's why I get paid, no, okay.
So- Hang on, can you pause a little bit? I think the council wants to make some comments on this.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Niss.
I love your enthusiasm, Phil, but I wanted to say something directly to the Girl Scouts and their leader because when you came last year, you came with this incredible message. I then watched as you received a terrific award. Maybe you can remind me what it was?
Our bronze award.
Yes, which was, which was very impressive. And I think, starting, I realize it's not just your troop, but you realize what I have in my hand, right? Right. This one is metal. It comes with a brush so that I can keep it clean. And I think as a result of that, you have really raised awareness, not only in our community, but, but throughout the country. So, you know, it, it can start small and really become big and you've made such a difference. I, and I particularly appreciate your plastic bags message. You've read what's happening in Monterey Bay, which I think is shocking. And, you know, you're starting at this terrific young age to make a big difference. So thank you so much for what you've done and thanks for coming here and kicking off our, our particular ordinance tonight that's going to address exactly this issue. So thanks for coming.
Amen. Phil.
So many thanks to the Girl Scouts. Now for our formal part of our presentation, I'm going to introduce Chuck Muir and our zero-waste group manager, in our zero-waste group, who's going to talk about the foodware. So it's, it's more, our ordinance covers more than plastic straws and we've chosen this word "foodware" to cover it. So we'll give a presentation on that. And as the city manager pointed out a moment ago, our recommendation number two, we can't consider tonight. We made errors in the way it was noticed, so we'll be coming back to you in the coming weeks on that one. The third part of this is, you'll be hearing tonight, and that is the deconstruction ordinance. So the second major part of our presentation will follow immediately after our foodware. And then our suggestion, Mayor, is that you then turn to the public for comments and then, of course, council, and separating the action on the two is our suggestion. In other words, have a discussion on food- In other words, have a discussion on foodware, have your vote, have a discussion on deconstruction, and have your vote. So, that's what we're going to suggest, and I'll let Chuck proceed with the foodware part of our presentation. Chuck Muir.
Welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. I just want to say thank you also to the Girl Scouts for sharing all that they've done and to educate us all on the issues of plastic straws. Your efforts are to be applauded. I'm here to present to council the recommended changes to the disposable foodware and produce bag ordinances. Staff recommendations include that council find that the ordinance be exempt from CEQA under Section 15061, in that the changes being proposed to the ordinance do not have a significant effect on the environment. And staff recommends that council adopt the ordinance amending Chapters 5.30 and 5.35 of Title V of the Palo Alto Municipal Code to, one, regulate the use of disposable foodware, including restricting the use of plastic straws, cutlery, beverage plugs, stirrers, and other accoutrements, and the provision to printed receipts at foodware service establishments; and, two, to restrict the use of plastic produce and meat bags at retail service establishments, including grocery stores and farmers' markets. So, disposable foodware requirements that are being proposed. First, I will review the proposed disposable foodware ordinance changes. These changes being proposed are part of the first phase of a multi-phase approach to reducing disposable foodware. I will talk more about the future phases later on in the presentation. The new requirements apply to any establishment in the city of Palo Alto that provides prepared food for public consumption. The requirement being proposed is to ban plastic straws, plastic utensils, plastic stirrers, plastic drink plugs, and other small plastic drink and food accoutrements. In addition to that, require these banned foodware items to be reusable or compostable, and to only be provided upon request or via self-serve station.
So, we've got a board here that we're trying to pass around to make it a little more visual. Most of this is self-influential. I would just point out that it's hard to determine at first glance the difference between plastic- Yeah, sorry. The plastic spoons that are not compostable and a different form of plastic which is compostable, and he's shown down there. So, if you don't mind, council member, we just commit that to you.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. So, the exhibit being passed around is to show examples of the banned foodware, banned disposable foodware items, and acceptable compostable alternatives that exist. One example, as Phil pointed out, is there are compostable plastics that would be allowed in the ordinance. These plastics look like regular plastics, but they're made from plant materials such as cornstarch and are broken down by bacteria in industrial compost facilities. The city sends its compostable material to what's called the Zero Waste to Energy Development Facility in San Jose, where yard trimmings, food-soiled paper, and other compostable materials are converted into compost and energy. So, this ordinance would also require food service establishments to only provide sales receipts upon request. This ordinance, just for clarification, does not include banning food or beverage containers. Those items will be addressed in the next phase of this disposable foodware reduction plan. The other ordinance requirement includes banning the use of produce bags in grocery stores and farmers' markets, but allowing for these items to be compostable. There's already stores that use compostable produce bags, so it's already in use already. The next slide shows to some of the other cities that are in the forefront of limiting the use of disposable foodware. Palo Alto's ordinance contains requirements similar to those passed by these other cities. The city will be the first in the South Bay to implement disposable foodware requirements and be the first city in the Bay Area to ban plastic produce bags from grocery stores and farmers' markets. As alluded to by the Girl Scouts, plastic waste is found in our streams, in our oceans. Marine animals often mistake pieces of plastic for food. Scientists have discovered plastic waste at depths of thirty thousand feet below sea level, and smaller pieces of plastic, called microplastics, have been found in the French Pyrenees at elevations of forty-five hundred feet above sea level. So, plastics are being detected in the environment more and more. So, to protect the environment, we propose starting to keep some of these plastics out in the environment. In addition, we're proposing to reduce the amount of plastic waste being landfilled. One of the city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plans, one of the goals is ninety-five percent diversion of waste from the landfill by 2030. Requiring foodware items and plastic bags to be compostable will help reduce the amount of waste that is landfilled. In this slide, you can see what I call our phased approach. Phase one are the current requirements being recommended. If passed or if approved, this first phase of requirements would be effective January 1st, 2020, and the other phases would not be proposed until 2021 and 2025. Here are some examples of potential proposals for future phases. Require reusable foodware for dine-in, or require a charge for non-reusable cups and containers. The purpose of this is to really get people using reusable foodware and reusable items for when they go out to eat or consume food or beverages. The ultimate goal is to reduce the amount of waste being generated, reduce the amount of plastic being used, and requiring more sustainable alternatives. These proposals match with the city's 2018 Zero Waste Plan initiatives and the Sustainability Climate Action Plan goal of ninety-five percent diversion of waste from the landfill by 2030.
All right, thank you, Chuck.
Thanks.
So, that completes the part of our formal presentation on foodware. And now, I'm going to ask Paula Borges to join us. And excuse to the audience, Chuck will be available for questions when that time is ready. So, Paula is our acting Zero Waste Manager. Acting because Ron Arp has retired on us, and you'll recall Tall Ron. He now is having a hundred and five-degree temperatures in Phoenix where he has moved. So, Paula is going to discuss our deconstruction ordinance now.
Hi, good evening. As Phil mentioned, my name is Paula, and this is the portion of the presentation that focuses on the deconstruction ordinance. Tonight, we ask council to adopt a resolution adopting the negative declaration for the deconstruction ordinance as adequate and complete under CEQA, and to adopt an ordinance to establish deconstruction. To provide some background and a reminder on why we are proposing this ordinance, we provide this slide. And as mentioned earlier, in 2016, the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan was accepted by council and included a framework which had zero-waste goals of ninety-five percent diversion of waste from landfills by 2030, along with a reduction of greenhouse gases. In 2018, the city updated its Zero Waste Plan and included forty-eight initiatives, four of which are short-term initiatives relating to the reduction of landfill construction and demolition material. Currently, the city's green building regulation require recycling and that projects over twenty-five thousand dollars submit a debris management plan and for contractors to input weights into Green Halo to track tenages for each project. In addition, single-family residential projects going through complete demolition today are required to submit a salvage survey provided by an approved reuse organization. However, in spite of past efforts and current green building requirements, construction and demolition waste is still one of the largest landfill contributors. Over forty percent of the waste from Palo Alto is disposed in landfills, which is about nineteen thousand tons annually, and it comes from construction and demolition-related projects. This waste is produced during the process of demolition, construction, renovation, and remodels of structures. It is therefore essential that we focus on reducing the source of landfill material in order to meet the city's environmental goals. Today, much of the landfill waste comes from traditional demolition of buildings when materials are crushed using heavy machinery. This picture was recently taken at 429 University, not too far from City Hall, and it shows a building which was quickly demolished within a matter of hours using heavy machinery, and the mixture of commingled materials was combined into large debris boxes and sent to processing facilities with varying rates of recovery ranging from seventy to eighty percent depending on the facility. Deconstruction, on the other hand, is a more environmentally friendly alternative to demolition. During the deconstruction of a building, materials are systematically disassembled, and it is typically done in the opposite order that a building is constructed. It maximizes reuse and the source separation of debris for recycling, and therefore results in a higher recovery and recyclability of materials. Deconstruction and source separation focuses on handling of discards as resources rather than waste, and it follows a preferable waste management and zero-waste hierarchy of reduce, reuse, recycle, and compost. These strategies are crucial for conserving resources and protecting the environment and are essential in accomplishing Palo Alto's goals. To learn more about the process of deconstruction, staff conducted a deconstruction pilot project using an unoccupied office building owned by the city that needed to be removed. This was a twenty-five hundred square foot building known as the International Telephone and Telegraph Office Building, also known as the ITT Building. It was built in the 1950s, and it's located or was located within the Emory-Renzel Wetlands east of Highway 101. The deconstruction took place over the last few months, and the building generated about a hundred and eighty-four tons of material, with about four percent being set aside for reuse, which included mostly red old lumber, including redwood. Ninety-three percent of the material was source separated and recycled, and only three percent of the material was actually disposed as garbage. And this is where I turn to Phil, and he's going to show you some examples.
Well, one of your own suggested to us that we use a few props to make the points. So, when deconstruction occurs, it allows for a hierarchy of uses. The first hierarchy is something that's going to be reused in exactly the same manner or very similar to what it was originally, reuse. And sometimes, the word salvage gets used. So, in our discussion tonight, we'll sort of be using those terms interchangeably, salvage and reuse. So, an example is a tile, right? It can be removed, and if it's removed in a good way, it can be reused as a tile in some form. Another example is a brick or block that could be reused if recovered in its entirety like this. It could be reused, but oftentimes, it's not possible to remove it in one piece and to reuse it. So, then, we get into recycling. Here's an example of a block or brick that is obviously not going to be reused, but can be recycled. So, if this makes its way to a reuse facility, it can be hammered down into what we call base rock, a mixture of sizes that performs as the underlayment to roadways and other construction projects. So, reuse, recycling, and you know our hierarchy. Another example for that is wood. If wood is in good shape, this is bad shape, if wood is in good shape, even if it's not perfect, if it's nice old redwood like this, somebody will buy it, and it'll be reused. If it's not in good shape, it'll be recycled in this way. Something like this, that's an organic material, it'll be shredded and become compost, hopefully. That's the highest use of something that's been deconstructed but not able to be reused. So, we're going to use this word recycling, and it's going to include composting because organic stuff like wood would be composted. Another sort of fun example, and the last one, is sheet rock. In the olden days, sheet rock was considered part of the waste. There really wasn't anything you could do about it. But now, we're realizing that if sheet rock is separated on-site and kept separated, that when it gets to a reuse facility, it can be ground down into what it really is, which is gypsum. Well, gypsum is a soil supplement that farmers need and will pay for. So, we've, in recent years, come to the realization that this material, sheet rock, can be recycled. It's not reused in the same fashion it was, but it is recycled. It has a good purpose. So, those are the examples from reuse and recycling that we wanted to point out.
Thank you, Phil. All right, so staff developed concepts for a deconstruction ordinance, and we brought these concepts to public meetings during the Zero Waste Plan. We sent the draft concepts to twelve hundred contractors, architects, property developers, and reuse organizations, and we held and attended multiple stakeholder meetings in February through November of 2019. And we received good feedback. We heard some of the concerns that stakeholders had related to cost, related to the additional time that it would take to deconstruct a building, and the concern for lack of available space for multiple containers for the separated material. In response, staff determined that the original proposed threshold in our initial concepts was too low and created too big of a change for stakeholders to make all at once, and therefore, we created three different phases, which is item number four in the slide. In addition, staff further reduced the ordinance proposal to just Phase One, with plans to bring back the later phases to council in the future. The slower implementation will allow staff to provide greater support to the number of projects impacted, and it will ease compliance and will allow us to provide more outreach to stakeholders. And this is a summary of our ordinance. As a consequence of stakeholder feedback, the proposed ordinance before you tonight applies only to projects going through complete building demolition. So, starting July 1, 2020, residential and now commercial projects obtaining permits for- for complete demolition will need to follow the new deconstruction requirements. Salvage surveys are to be conducted listing materials and items that can be salvaged for reuse, and certification is needed that confirms that the materials were received by the reuse organization. Another new requirement is that deconstruction and source separation of materials for recycling and compost, and delivery to city-approved processing facilities. The fourth bullet is the city's hauler Green Waste of Palo Alto will collect the source-separated material in containers. Self-haul and trucks will still be allowed, but materials will still need to be source-separated. And all the reporting that will be required will be done through existing resources already used by stakeholders. This slide is just a quick summary of the proposed ordinances. As mentioned, tonight, you are only reviewing Phase One for the deconstruction ordinance, which will affect about 115 projects. You may be wondering what other jurisdictions are doing in terms of deconstruction. Many are encouraging it and highly recommending it. However, there are about four key cities with policies requiring deconstruction in terms of salvaging materials for reuse. This includes Portland, which was one of the first cities in the nation to recreate a policy for salvaging building materials for reuse. Others that followed Portland are the cities of Seattle, Milwaukee, and Vancouver in British Columbia. There are other jurisdictions and counties also looking at developing policies, but none are as progressive and as advanced as Palo Alto. Our timeline is to provide outreach and education training to stakeholders, starting in July of this year. The deconstruction ordinance will then be, in effect, July 1 of 2020, and this would be for Phase One. This will allow staff to evaluate Phase One and track a lot of the data, and then return to council with proposed future ordinances in the spring of 2021. And this concludes the deconstruction ordinance portion of the presentation.
And that concludes our overall staff presentation, and the suggestion is that you now hear from the public.
Thank you. We will now go to the public for comments on both the foodware and the deconstruction ordinances. And how many speakers do we have? We have 16, and so you'll each have two minutes. And the first speaker will be Gloria Garcia, speaking for five, a group of five, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth and members of the council. My name is Gloria Garcia. I'm a teacher, owner of a small business, providing sustainable alternatives to plastic, and an advocate working to reduce plastics in our community. Today, I'm here to represent over 2,000 people who have signed this petition to expedite the disposable foodware reduction plan. Signees include people who live, work, and shop in Palo Alto. In addition, people from around the world have signed on because they believe in our mission, and hope that Palo Alto will be a model for how they can pass similar ordinances in their communities. I thank the staff at Zero Waste for creating a plan that outlines the changes we need to help create a sustainable culture in our community. I also want to thank the nonprofits that signed on to our letter to council, and everyone that's here to support our efforts to combine Phase One and Two to reduce single-use plastic. I invite them to stand up. So why are we here? We're here because we are aware of the dangers plastic poses when coming into contact with our food and drink. Studies by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences conclude plastics contain carcinogens and chemicals known to increase cancer, developmental delays, and disease. We're here because single-use plastics are polluting our environment on an unprecedented scale, and unfortunately, this is only predicted to increase. It's estimated that if trends continue, by 2050, plastics will count for 20% of all demand for fossil fuels. Do we really need further feasibility studies to vote on and implement all phases of the Zero-Waste Plan this evening? Can we allow business practices that undermine our health in the name of convenience and cost? Do we allow our reliance on recycling waste to pollute countries with little waste management oversight? With your input and help, council can make the decision to amend this ordinance for the second reading to include Phase One and Two, so that we put the health of our planet above the bottom line. Is there a way forward? Yes. Pictured here is a creative presentation of reusable glassware at one of our local restaurants. Restaurants can save money switching to reusable, as case studies by Rethink Disposable had found. Other local establishments in town already utilize paper straws, and with compostable alternatives available on the market, the switch to alternatives to plastic is easier than ever. Here is an example of a Cupertino business that switched from disposables. As you can see here, paper, plastic, styrofoam, and wooden chopsticks were all replaced with reusable foodware for dining. Implementing Phase One and Two of the foodware reduction plan will put businesses on notice of the need to switch their practices. With a grace period for full implementation and community-led education, businesses will find that switching to sustainable alternatives to single-use plastics is cost-effective, time-saving, and ultimately, just good practice consumers want to see. I also want to highlight that even our addiction to to-go cups for hot beverages has an alternative. While ultimately, we would like to see zero-waste practices where consumers bring their own cups, businesses have options to provide customers cups free from chemicals and plastics. In addition, with a 25-cent charge on to-go cups, more people will be inclined to bring their own cups, just as we have done with plastic bag ordinances. We can't wait on policy to catch up to the problems we're facing today. By taking bold steps now, we can prevent future damage to our health and our environment. We can lead the way for other cities nationwide and worldwide to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sheri Sager.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Sheri Sager, and I'm speaking on behalf of Lucille Packer Children's Hospital, Stanford, tonight. Before I get started, I want to congratulate the Girl Scouts as a former Girl Scout, Girl Scout leader and a board member in Santa Clara County. I applaud you on your efforts and your work. The hospital remains committed to being a green facility. We were proud when we came forward a number of years ago for our entitlement process that environmental sustainability was one of our top goals, and that the hospital we opened in December 2017 met LEED Platinum standards. We appreciate the opportunity to work with your staff on nuances that we need for an inpatient hospital facility. We have no question and no issue in terms of our cafeteria and our consumer and family-facing eating establishments, but we got clarification that at least in Phase One, it does not include our inpatient in our emergency room, which is really key, because there are some issues about what we need to be able to do for our patients. And we are looking forward to the day when those will not be issues, but we're not there yet. In addition, as we go through in terms of the guidelines and the further development, we want to raise the issue of emergency preparedness. Under state and federal law, we have to be able to operate for a week and to have four days' worth of supplies, food and supplies, on-site. And unfortunately, until we can come up with some additional alternatives for how we can provide water, we're still stuck with having some of that water being provided in single-use bottles. It's not our choice, but until we're able to develop that, and our staff is looking for alternatives, but we're supportive of Phase One, and we would like to continue working with staff on these other issues as this moves to Phase Two and Three.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm speaking on behalf of Stanford Healthcare. We, as similar to Lucille Packer Children's Hospital, we also have been sustainable for quite a number of years. For the last five years, we have, actually, we do still in our inpatient areas, use reusable plates and silverware. In our cafeteria and some of our other areas, we do use reusable compostable straws and silverware and, or plateware. And we will continue to look at options that work, but we have been sustainable and using these products over the last five years. It has been very helpful to work with the staff, and I want to recognize them. We were able to understand what goes on in the hospital environment, but also what their concerns were, and as Sheri pointed out, it's clarified that at least the first phase applies to our cafeteria and not to our inpatient areas, and we look forward to working on Phases Two and Three with the staff. I also want to commend the Girl Scouts to all the incredible work that they did over the last year. It's amazing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth and city council members. My name's Geraldine Moran. I'm a Palo Alto resident. I really applaud our city's zero-waste goals, and all three of these proposed ordinances help satisfy some critical components within these goals. An overarching focus that I think about should be on the three Rs here: reduce, reuse, and recycle, but in that order. Reducing all forms of single-use foodware is a really clear first step. Requiring reuse is step number two, and a robust, local recycling infrastructure is step number three. I encourage you to adopt all three phases of the disposable foodware reduction plan now. They can be implemented concurrently. I respectfully ask that you add one more mandate to work toward a required deposit on all single-use plastic water bottles, partnered with an equivalent refund when those same single-use bottles are returned for recycling. I must note that while swapping out plastic single-use items with wood-fiber-based single-use products has merit, it is misguided at this point. We must protect remaining all trees and support forest stewardship for a multitude of reasons, as carbon sinks being just one of them. Thank you for listening to me. Time is not on our side.
Thank you.
Karen Alter has ceded her two minutes to me. So council members and mayor, my name is Miriam Gordon. I am the program director for Upstream, a national NGO that finds innovative solutions to plastic pollution. I have 20 years of experience working on plastic pollution and waste issues, and I started the Rethink Disposable program that Gloria was talking about, which partners with the city of Palo Alto. That program has certified over 200 businesses in the Bay Area in transitioning to reduce and reuse, mostly to reusables, and they have all saved money. So reducing and reusing for food businesses is a good business proposition. We applaud the staff for developing the foodware items reduction plan. It is a good outline of where we need to get to, but this ordinance only implements Phase One. And in Phase One, what we're really talking about is transitioning our disposable plastics to compostable paper and fiberware, as you saw on the board. While getting rid of plastic is really good for the marine environment, it doesn't go far enough. We need to focus on reducing all of our single-use disposables in foodware. So when we transition to paper, we're cutting down, let's be clear, it's about cutting down more trees, so transferring the environmental burden from our oceans to climate and habitat and everything, all the positive things that trees provide for our planet and for our health are at stake. Same thing with corn-based plastics and agricultural products that are used for making bioplastics. That's a very harmful set of impacts as well, associated with agriculture. It means more water, more energy, more fertilizers, more pesticide use. I think I have two more minutes.
You're the second person?
Yeah. I have Karen's time. So I just want to encourage that Phase One is a good first step, but we really need Phase Two and Three in this ordinance, and encourage you to do an amendment for the second reading. And specifically, the three provisions that I would encourage you to prioritize are no disposables for on-site dining, and then charges for the takeout cups, a 25-cent charge for the takeout cups, which gets people to bring their own reusable cups. And third, the ban on the fluorinated or PFAS chemicals, which are highly toxic. They leach out of compostable packaging into our food and beverages, and they contaminate our compost and the groundwater below it. Berkeley did this, and the city of San Francisco and city of San Anselmo are currently considering ordinances that do these three things, and they are in the foodware plan, in the city of Berkeley's foodware plan. So why wait? If this is the plan, why not put these things in the ordinance now? It would be a good idea to give the businesses notice that these things are coming. You can have extended implementation dates for the things that go beyond compostables, and it signals to the community that you are wanting to get rid of the throwaway culture. Thank you.
So before you leave, did you say Karen Alter, number 17, is the...
Yeah, she's ceding her time to me.
Okay, so can we remove Karen Alter? You're supposed to do this in advance, so if you come back, please do in advance.
Sorry, every city council has different processes. I wasn't familiar with this.
Thank you for visiting us.
I apologize. Thank you.
Patty, sorry, Ethel and Gordon.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth and members of the city council. Indeed, Miriam is my daughter. I am Ethel Adina Gordon. I'm an art historian, still working at my late age, but as a resident of the Muldau Residences, a senior living facility comprised mainly of independent living units in Palo Alto, I wish to express my support for this ordinance and to encourage you to add in other elements of the foodware reduction plan that would reduce single-use packaging overall. I also request that the city find a way to make it easier for residents who live in the many senior living facilities to compost food packaging and food waste. In facilities like Muldau, residents typically do not compost because the buildings were not originally designed with composting facilities or pickup from each apartment unit. Muldau is on the campus of the Jewish Community Center of Palo Alto, where compost bins stand on the outside in outdoor locations. These, however, are too distant for many of the independent livers with advanced health issues. issues to carry food waste and the plethora of compostable containers that they receive with the takeaway orders. If the dining services of such senior residences as Muldau and the many ones around Palo Alto were constrained by city ordinances to reduce their takeout packaging, it would lessen the burden on the waste stream. Remember, it's the management of these places that force the residents to use the plastics. It's not the residents' wish, but the ordinance would help. I therefore urge you to strengthen this ordinance by adding such a provision into Phase 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Riguer.
Hi, I'm Patty Riguer, and I'm a Zero Waste Leader of Palo Alto, and I wanted to thank the staff and everyone, and you guys for listening to us. It seems like it's reaching one of your goals of aiming to listen to the community, and so thank you. And also, I think this is a win-win situation for everyone because it's going to lower the cost of the landfill, I mean, the burden of the landfill, but also, one of your priorities was from the retreat, I read, was global climate change and et cetera, and I think this is like a win-win for all of us to be leaders in this. I want to thank you all for listening to us and, and for us, for helping you reach your, one of your priorities for this year.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth, Vice Mayor Fine, and Council members. I'm speaking in support of the construction ordinance and speaking in two roles. One is as Director of the nonprofit called the Reuse People, and secondly, as the owner of a construction company headquartered here in Palo Alto for over 20 years that builds green homes here. I'm also a former Chair of the ARB. Just to reaffirm the point that was made earlier, the proposed deconstruction ordinance is part of the 2018 Zero Waste Plan that, when fully implemented, moves the city closer to achieving Palo Alto's S-CAP goal of 95% waste diversion from landfills by 2030. That's why we're here. Every month in Palo Alto, there are thousands, perhaps even hundreds of thousands of pounds of usable construction materials, such as cabinets, lumber, and windows hauled to the landfills as buildings are being torn down. As you heard in the staff presentation, over 44% of the waste from Palo Alto that's disposed in landfills is from construction and demolition-related projects. We really believe that reuse is way, way beyond its time now. We really need to do it. Recycling a 2x4 just simply makes it mulch for gardens and landscapes. Reusing it as a 2x4 in buildings makes sure that we don't cut down a whole lot more trees. There are cost issues that we've dealt with, mostly through, in residential work, through charitable donations for building materials that people can get significant tax deductions for. Then, I'm speeding up here because I'm running low on time. The provision requiring receipts gives the city teeth to enforce the reuse component. We're really in favor of that, and we're also in favor of making sure that the salvage materials actually do end up being reused and that there's some enforceable means to do that. We're also in favor strongly in accelerating the next phases of this and making sure that we get to those really quickly for full implementation. The next speaker was to be Dave Marcan, and he had to leave because of a family emergency, and he is a demolition/deconstruction subcontractor who is also going to speak in favor of this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. So if Dave McKean is not here, Herb Borack.
There are two definitions in the ordinance that staff will be bringing back, and I believe it's appropriate now to mention my concerns about them. The first on packet page 282 is a definition of cart, that's something that's picked up by collection vehicles, but the same word cart is used at the top of page 284 to refer to a food establishment. The second definition has to do with multi, multifamily property and trying to conform into the planning department's definition of number of units, but within the refuse rate schedules, the current definition matches whether something is multifamily for a commercial rate or a residential rate. And so it's important to understand why that change is being made. All three ordinances have a section near the end that if part of the ordinance is declared invalid, that the council says it should have adopted the ordinance anyway. But I believe the way it's usually done, and I believe in correct English, is that it's would rather than should have adopted. In terms of plastics, plastics essentially start with the fact of not wanting to have plastics and then inventing the term "single-use." Well, the food establishment gives you out the plastic once, but customers do reuse each of those plastic items. It appears that instead, the argument is, oh, well, it's really, it can't be composted. But what composting does is releases carbon dioxide into the air. That's easily seen with yard waste, where the carbon is sequestered in the green waste. But when you compost it, you have the carbon dioxide. So I think there may be some other reason why plastic is trying to be removed. In fact, at page, packet page 272, the director can declare whatever he wants to as to being recyclable or not being recyclable. And so I see two things. One is the petroleum aspect of it, as one thing, and--
Herb, can you wrap up?
Right, yeah, just like everybody else. And then the other thing is the market. That is, there's no market for it anymore, maybe that's why you're doing it.
Thank you. At this point, we're not going to stop taking more cards for this topic, and the next speaker will be Ed Dunn.
Hello, my name is Ed Dunn. I work for San Francisco Community Recyclers. I've been working in this industry since a little after Earth Day. My father helped start one of the early recycling centers up in San Francisco. Over the course of the ensuing decades in San Francisco, we moved from building, from bottles and cans and paper to building materials. And today, I'd like to, main thing my mission is today is to draw your attention to a late document that got into your packet that I delivered just now, didn't meet your 11-day requirement, from the Building Materials Reuse Association. And just carefully look at that. It reflects a general concern from what's called the EPA Deconstruction Policy Working Group that was convened in 19, in 2017 to look at the Portland model and see how it could be applied here. My concern and the concern of the members of that EPA group and the Building Materials Reuse Association is that there's been a serious lack of relevant stakeholder input on this ordinance. Tonight, you've seen pictures of a deconstruction project underway, fine, well, and good. You've not seen pictures of people buying that stuff, and that is the crucial thing, all right? Who is going to take the stuff and take it back to their house and reuse it as is, all right? Second problem, all right? We've heard staff talk about how salvage and reuse and recycling and all these great words are somehow interchangeable. They're not. They're very specific. I would urge all of you to take a ride over to Urban Oar, and if you can, maybe try to reach out to Dan, Dr. Dan Knapp and his wife Mary Lou Van Deventer, all right? They've been doing this for decades. They're the first people to open a reuse yard that I know of in the Bay Area, and they're very particular about the words we use, like Chomsky, to describe what we're doing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, and thanks for having me. I'm Janet Walworth, longtime Palo Alto resident, retired attorney, turned grandmother, and worried about the environment. So that's what I work on these days. I'm here to talk sort of on a different level, and that is about the particular health risks of plastics. And probably the big risk that I've learned about more recently is that plastics have chemicals that are known as endocrine disruptors. And the endocrine system is a complex network of glands and hormones. They regulate the body's functions, including growth, development, and maturation, as well as the way the various organs operate. Endocrine glands, including pituitary, thyroid, adrenal, pancreas, ovaries, intestines, release carefully measured amounts of blood into the bloodstream that act as natural chemical messengers, traveling to the different parts of the body to tell the body basically how to function. But an endocrine disruptor is a synthetic chemical, and it's absorbed, when absorbed by the body, it disrupts the body's normal functioning by mimicking or blocking the body's natural functions. And plasticizers are such an endocrine disruptor. And I learned about this from a Stanford researcher and professor, Peter Myers. He gave a speech recently at the Commonwealth Club. I have a copy of that, if anybody wants me to email it to them. And it talks about the dark side of plastic that goes beyond the heartbreaking pictures of bird stomachs filled with plastic and turtles necks. And basically, he says that these plastic endocrine disruptors hack the hormone signaling system that control fetal development. They can set into motion physiological processes that can lead to a wide array of diseases and disabilities. And the core central themes of the research, he says, are that low doses of endocrine disruptors matter, that when, what starts in the-- Oops. Can I have a few minutes more?
Could you wrap up, please?
Yes. What starts in the womb goes beyond, and that it goes to show why it's so bad to have plastics in our ocean with the fish eating it and in our landfill.
Thank you. Edie Keating.
Hello. I support this ordinance. The shift away from single-use overall to, you know, multi-use to reusable is the very best part of this ordinance. I'm also excited about the shifts this ordinance will cause, away from things that go in the black bin and away from things that go in the blue bin, and having more, or hopefully at some restaurants, having everything go into the compost bin if there is anything that's being thrown away. I have a lot more confidence that there will always be a market for what goes into the compost bin, while I have less confidence that there will be always a market for what goes into the blue bin. I hope there's an enforcement aspect of this. I hope there's a way for citizens to report what we find, because I'm sure this won't be instantly easily adopted, but I think many citizens would really welcome the opportunity to know what to do when a business is not complying with this ordinance as its different phases go into effect. And I think the last unheard benefit of this, or, you know, indirect benefit, is I think this will be very satisfying and will make the residents of Palo Alto really happy. I think it'll be much more clear at almost any establishment where you're, has a self-serve aspect, what goes where when you're wrapping up and throwing things out, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Orlandi. Is Diana Orlandi here?
Hello, Mayor and Council members. My name is Allison Picoli, and I am here with the California Restaurant Association here in the Bay Area. I'm here tonight to discuss some details that remain concerning with our restaurant members here in Palo Alto. I first wanted to thank you for the "upon request" definition. That's very helpful for us, and that makes it much more workable. So first, with the definition of compostable. So here, compostable is defined as any item deemed acceptable within the city's compost collection program. Restaurants have a really hard time figuring out which products are accepted by city's collections, especially when they have locations in different cities, and have to figure out which materials are acceptable at which location. So if this could be redefined in more specific terms, that would be great. Some of our members have asked for the definition to include different ASTM standard labels. For example, one of our members in Palo Alto today asked me if the ASTM standard D6400 would be allowed in this particular ordinance. Compostable products are sold with these tags, which makes ordering the materials a lot easier. Secondly, accessory items like straws or sleeves, utensils, napkins, are the things we consider essential to consume food or drink on the go. It is difficult for customers to request these items while not dining in the restaurant, particularly if they are using an online ordering platform or app. This could cause frustration if they're not home or if they're ordering online. And lastly, in response to the restriction on paper receipts, customers are used to be being given a receipt already, and they keep them automatically without having to ask, and often rely on that for their own records. So instead of an upon-request model, which a customer may forget to ask for one, we ask instead that it be an upon-offer model, which would make it easier so that someone can then accept or decline it. And also, it's worth noting that AB 161 goes into effect already in 2022, which requires all paper receipts to be upon-request statewide. So hopefully, we can make this workable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's a lot that's been said about the pervasive impacts of plastic, and I don't need to repeat that. I think it would be wonderful to stop the use of straws, but I think releasing balloons could be a really small adjustment here. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Prashy Agarwal.
Good evening, Council members. I'm a resident of Palo Alto and really proud to be part of a city that is considering this ordinance. I support bringing Phase 2 into the ordinance and strengthening it. We need to move towards reduction of single-use throwaway items, be it plastic or corn-based compostable. We really need to move away from culture of convenience and throwaway culture that we have and move towards reusing rather than throwaway. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we return to Council for questions, comments, and motions. Councilmember Niss.
So, Mayor Philseth, do you want us to divide this into parts or take it all at once?
Oh, yes. I think that we, as we discussed before, what we should do is--
What, two parts?
Yeah, two parts. The first ordinance, followed by the second ordinance.
Okay, and we sadly had to drop one, which is too bad. So going back down through this, and this is to talk about the ordinance for disposable foodware, and it's not going to be produce bags. So just tell us, Phil, produce bags will be back end of the, before the end of the month?
Sorry for the confusion on this. No, produce bags are part of the foodware. That's how we set it up. The part that has to come back to you that relates to bags is the custodial bags, let's call them. In the commercial sector, they are going to have to have three tinted, one clear, two tinted colors. That's the part that has to come back to you. I see the issue because the-- Yeah, part of our error-- The text up here on 2 is not correct.
Right, which is number 2.
Yeah, so the title is not correct with respect to number 2. That was part of the error. Produce bags shouldn't have been mentioned there.
Okay, so then what I'm moving is up here on the board, and it's number 1, which is our new foodware requirements, including the restrictions on the big panel that you saw going around. And also is, just waiting to, also talks about printed receipts and whether or not you will be provided those. And this indicates you will not be, but you can ask for one. So I'll wait for a second. So, especially from listening to the group here tonight, I don't think this is very controversial, but I think that it's an incredible step toward moving to the next step where I think we should be. There's no question that we cannot continue using things that are not sustainable, and I'm so glad the Girl Scouts came tonight because that's one of the best examples of how do you move forward with this. They did it with plastic straws, which, as we've all learned, are one of the most dangerous kinds of material that is floating in the ocean or off on the shore that are so dangerous for any kind of animal life, any kind of sea life. So I'm delighted with that. I think you have all seen the samples that went around. I don't know where they are at this point. But I've also noticed that a lot of restaurants have already started using these. You can buy compostables at any of the big stores, and, you know, I hope that this is going to make a difference for us as a community and for us as a, frankly, as a country. So I don't need to add to that one. Thanks.
Just briefly, and again, I want to thank the Troop 60016 for all your--
Just briefly, and again, I want to thank the Troop 60016 for all your work on this. And hopefully, tonight, you're going to see this culminate in policy and staff as well. You know, I think we can live without plastic straws. And I think the restriction on produce and meat bags makes sense as well. Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to support this. Thank you to staff for bringing this forward. Thank you to everyone who spoke on it, but especially thank you to the Girl Scout troop. I'll just point out, your work, you know, which started a year ago, has now produced about a 200-page staff report and numerous changes. And all of us up here can attest to how hard it is to actually get change done in this city. So kudos to you all. This really is pretty cool, and it's nice to see you thinking about the future and how this affects things. And also, one of you mentioned, you know, issues with the hospital, and so you see this whole, like, public policy thing. I think that's a really cool experience. One very quick question for staff. Page 261, it says, "Our changes are only including straws, utensils, stirrers, drink plugs, food picks, and drink accoutrements." I'm wondering, what else is there? What else could we be doing? And I'm not going to be proposing. I'm just wondering, like, what else is there in this space?
Well, Phil Volble, Public Works. The next sort of big thing is what you could generally describe as containers, right? Food containers. So we're not proposing in the ordinance to act on those. Part of our suggested Phase 2, which we're going to be further vetting, doing research on, bringing back to you, is the food container, whether it be a cup, a soup container, a so-called clamshell. These things are not part of Phase 1.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question is, I saw there was also, you know, the ban on plastic produce and meat bags. It just occurred to me, I went to the deli yesterday, and at first, they wrap it in paper, but then there's not a bag, but actually, like, a sheet. And does this affect those sheets or not?
It would only affect bags that they would use, and not all places do use bags in the meat department.
Okay. Now, you know, sometimes you, like, if you go to the deli and they have, the outer wrapping is paper, the inner wrapping is just like a sheet, actually. It's not a bag. I'm not --
There are a lot of delis like that.
All right. Thank you very much. Happy to support this.
Can I get out of line here and ask an extension of Vice Mayor Fine's question, which is, there was a phrase that somebody used during the presentation of, I think it was like industrial composting or something like that. And it's, because you asked, what can we do next? It sounds like, I mean, my understanding is there are certain kind of things that are technically compostable, but it's not that you just throw it in the bin and let it rot. It's like, it has to be, you know, heated to high temperatures and compressed and stuff like that. Is that the case on some of this as well?
Well, I think the jury is still out with respect to individual compost operations, whether object A will actually compost in this particular one or not. And that's why I think some of the speakers said, "Composting isn't the endgame." We agree, composting isn't the endgame. The endgame is to take that step that's in our third phase, which is going to be really tough, which is go all the way to reusables. Because even with composting, there's cutting down trees, there's the use of materials, and all the things that some of the speakers pointed to. So we're sort of looking at composting as the best bridge to, I think that's Brad's word, we're bridging to a lot of things these days. And so compost is not the endgame, but it is a good bridge. It's better than these plastics.
I understand. Okay. So I have lights from Councilmember Cormac and Councilmember Tanaka, and I think Councilmember Cormac was first.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Suth. I have some compliments and then a few questions and then some potential amendments. First compliments are, "Congrats on solving the boba tea problem," because that's a real problem, so delighted to see that happen. Thank you for the visual. You've gone beyond. Now we have 3D visuals, so fantastic. I appreciate that. I want to compliment you on the strong outreach program that was covered on packet page 262. I'm sensing a theme here throughout the city, and it makes our job a lot easier when a lot of the objections have been surfaced and handled, as we saw with at least one of them from the hospital. Now, a few questions. What exactly are accoutrements? Like, what else is left? I mean, what is an example of, is this just like a catch-all term or?
Yeah. So we couldn't think of anything that was really left that was, that we could identify and call by name. But if there's some plastic item that some restaurants are putting forth --
A garnish? A plastic garnish?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I was just curious about that. So one of my main questions here is really, what about coffee cups, coffee and teacups? Because if I think about what I just personally see on a day-to-day basis, no matter where I am in the city, that seems like a really large portion of this.
It is.
And why are they in Phase 2 and not Phase 1? And am I right that, sorry, this is a stack of questions. I'll stop and let you answer that one.
Yeah. You're right that it's in Phase 2. And the reason is that there's several parts to the coffee cup, right? There is the lid, and there is the cup itself, are the two main components. So we thought we needed more time to, when we went some time ago to the coffee people in our town, all the ones like Starbucks that sell coffee, they said, "Hey, give us a little more time. The industry is going to solve this for us. The industry is going to have a compostable lid, and the cup is currently compostable, according to you guys," which we say, "Yes, it is." So we figured with a little more time, and there is a compostable lid now, but has it been vetted by everybody? Has everybody agreed that this really works? We didn't think so. So we thought, a little more time, and we could be coming back and insisting on essentially compostable coffee cups as well.
Is that the biggest thing in Phase 2?
No, I would say the biggest thing is the food containers themselves. These clamshells, that type of thing.
And why are we waiting on those?
Again, while some have moved to compostables, Whole Foods is kind of one of our poster children here. As you know, their equivalent is compostable. We accept them in our program. It's, it needs a little more time. We thought by putting out the plan, this colored sheet that has the three phases, we were giving, although it's not part of the ordinance tonight, we're indicating to the community, here's where we're headed. And those that need more time, now you have it. You can see where we're headed, and we're headed in the year-and-a-half timeframe, not the half-a-year timeframe that Phase 1 has.
Okay. Is there anything else in Phase 2 that is, it's not possible to do right now or you have serious concerns about?
Yeah.
You can see where my questions are leading, right? This is, I'm just wondering what we can pull up from Phase 2, if there's support for that.
Well, Chuck was just reminding me, and we had discussed this before, that probably the next easiest thing to do is go to reusables for dining in.
So that's?
That's currently shown as Phase 2.
Okay. So that's Phase 2, number 3 under require. Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let me see what else I have here. Other places have made an exception for people who are disabled. What are our thoughts on how to handle that? We certainly got at least one letter on this about a person for whom, you know, a compostable straw doesn't work for his mother.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat?
So there are some people for whom the compostable straws, they degrade too quickly or they don't provide enough resistance. Do we have any provision in here for disabled people?
We don't specifically have a provision for disabled people. We have indicated that the hospital situation, the patient, and it wouldn't be just a hospital situation, it could also be an outpatient clinic situation. We can address that via regulations in the future.
Okay.
We've given ourselves the ability to have regulations that take care of problems like that, and we can use the regulation process for it.
Okay. What about an exception for emergencies?
The --
Because it's not just hospitals, it's senior centers, it's daycares. I mean, we have a lot of situations here.
So I would say the same thing, that we can use our regulation process to make it clear.
Okay.
And actually, for the hospital, you know, given their need is more immediate to know for sure what the situation is, we'll be writing to them and indicating in all likelihood that that's not what the regulation was intended to do.
Okay. Well, it's more than that, right? It's senior, some of the senior centers as well.
It's all the various people who keep supplies for emergencies handy.
And does food service establishments include hotels?
They can't, yeah. If they supply food to the general public, yes.
Okay. All righty. Okay, that's all I had in terms of questions, but, you know, I'm interested in doing more, so I'd like to see if the maker and the seconder are willing to take at least a few things from Phase 2. One that I would suggest is, so I'm on packet page 438, under require. I think one way to get at the coffee cup thing would be to do number 2, charge for non-reusable cups and containers. And there was a proposal, you know, for 25 cents. Seems like that might make people rethink whether or not they want to remember to bring their reusable cup. I'm on packet page 438, Phase 2, require number 2.
If it's easier, you can also just look at this, which was at your place, is this little cheat sheet of ours.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
So in the orange section on the right-hand side.
She's looking down at the cream-colored Phase 2 area. And on the right-hand side, she's talking about numbers 2 and 3.
I guess what I like about that is it gets people involved as well as just businesses in terms of changing behavior, which is something we're going, we're hoping for. So I'll see if that's of interest to the maker and the seconder.
And I should also tell you, I spent a fair amount of time with Phil today, so that we talked about a number of these. I think I'd be willing to certainly consider it. I think the charge is what is going to get complicated, is what charge do we agree on and how do we get the restaurants to agree to do that now when we know that in the future we're going to hope to have those cups and have them available? So glad to hear how we would handle that. I think that's, that one's slightly more, a little more complicated. I would, it would be nice, I don't think we'll see this right away, it would be very desirable to see people go in with their own cup and then not have to worry about that aspect of it. Phil, do you want to talk about that?
Well, the only thing I would point out is that this ordinance would become effective on January 1, 2020, just barely over six months from now. I think it would be difficult for us to get a charge system in place by then.
Okay. All right. I'll withdraw.
Do you want to force it?
I'm not happy about it. No, I'm going to trust our staff.
Okay. Next one.
That, you know, that's the main one. I'm sensing that, you know, you put an awful lot of thought into this. I remain impatient, so I'll just say that to the extent that we can speed any of these up, please don't wait. If you think they can be done sooner, please don't wait.
And I totally support that.
That's a question.
And I hope we can move faster.
That's a question on that. The number 3 there, the reusable foodware for dining, I assume the answer is, the issue on that one is there may be places that don't have facilities to wash that. Okay?
You're right that that's probably the key thing that's slow to down there. Not that you can't buy a portable dishwasher and stick it in, and not that you can't find other ways to solve this problem, but with only six months to work all this out, it did seem difficult.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So, yeah, I just wanted to thank staff, and of course, the Girl Scouts were coming out. I think this is a critical issue. I think everyone's heard about China rejecting recyclables, so definitely there's an issue there, approaching 1 billion people. So definitely glad to see this here, and in general, I really liked the idea. I did want to ask staff a few questions. So we heard someone from, I forget who it was, someone from the restaurant industry, and wanted to just first to see, what was the general feedback you guys got from the restaurants here in Palo Alto in terms of their reaction to this ordinance? Can staff talk about that?
Yes. So we didn't hear from the Restaurant Association until now, but we could speculate that there would be concerns. That's the reason we divided things into phases. We took what we thought were really the simplest thing as part of Phase 1. So there's concerns were stated about cost, but these are all, you know, items that are in the range between 1 and 10 cents. There's concern about the amount of time to implement. Again, our answer was phasing. So we did hear concerns from the restaurants. We also heard a lot of enthusiasm about reducing the amount of plastic litter and ultimately material into our creeks and bays. So it was really mixed from the restaurants, depending on their individual perspectives, quite frankly.
Okay, but you guys did do outreach to the restaurants.
Oh, yes. We visited essentially all of them.
Okay. Perfect. Great. And so it sounded like people are supportive. There wasn't any strong opposition to this?
There wasn't what I would call strong opposition.
Okay. Great. And then the person that was speaking from the Restaurant Association, they were talking about trying to make this a little bit easier for people to comply, like having, and I'm not actually sure what this actually is, but ASTM or some sort of standard so that it's easy for them to order, comply to this. Is that contemplated already in this ordinances or how? Because I think, you know, I think what we want to do is we want to make sure this ordinance is achievable, right? I think it has good intent. I think everyone here in the city wants to make this happen, but it's how to make it happen, right? And so we want to make it easy for the restaurants to be able to comply.
Right.
So can you comment a little bit on that speaker's thoughts or recommendations in terms of trying to make this so that restaurants can comply?
Yes, we think that's a very valid point. We're going to have to focus on this definition of compostable. Not that there was anything wrong with our definition, but there is confusion in the nation, frankly, on this term, compostable. ASTM has a standard, but that would require us to sort of get in the business of checking against that, put us in the position of kind of referee on whether they meet this standard or not. What we'd rather do in the six months that we have until this would become effective is to look at the actual manufacturers, gather a list of the ones where we would agree that they met the definition of compostable, put that on our website so that restaurant people didn't have to worry about this ASTM thing or worry that somebody might be telling them, giving them the wrong information that their product actually met the ASTM thing. Just do that research ourselves and list the ones that we found acceptable on our website.
Okay. I think that sounds like a good plan because it's, I think it's got to be clear. Sometimes I look at, you know, I'm trying to recycle stuff. I'm trying to figure out, is it recyclable, not recyclable? I mean, I look at it, I can take my phone out and start Googling it, but I mean, it gets to be the point of a little bit difficult for people. Okay. And what about the thought, I guess I wanted to hear your comments or thoughts on offering a receipt versus someone having to ask for a receipt. What's the thoughts of staff on this? I guess what's, to me, it seems like it's not a bad thing to offer the receipt. They don't actually have to print it out, but what's the thought process behind it? The receipt seems like such a little piece of paper, so what's, like, why such emphasis on that?
Right. It's not one of the larger items in terms of the tons of material being produced. So our thinking was that it's another one of many things that we can start working on, a sort of a mindset change. Don't give somebody something just because you've given it to them 1,000 times.
I want to just offer the receipt because it's like this paper, so it's recyclable, right? And it's like a little, little bit, no, a small, little piece of paper. So what's the big deal?
Well, it's sort of semantics, I guess, whether you offer or you ask whether you really want it. You know, we won't be checking exactly what the cash person says to the individual. The key is, it's not just automatic. It's not thrown in the bag anymore.
Okay. So, I mean, you're okay with it with the, like, upon offer then versus, like, having to ask?
Yeah. Like I said, I think that's a semantic issue, and we won't be --
Okay.
And just to add one slight clarification, most receipts out there are on thermal paper.
that is actually not recyclable. So, you know, that's one of the bad things that has to go into our black bin.
Okay. And then, you know, there's, I mean, this is on straws, and I get that because it's a little bit hard to recycle, and on bags and whatnot, but I guess, has staff actually analyzed what consumes most of our volume of trash? Like what's, what's, like, what is most of our trash made out of? Because I'm just wondering whether we're going after mice nuts here, right? Or whether, like, whether, like, this is, you know, going to be like a really big impact on, on what we're doing here in the city? So I'm just, I'm just curious to understand the analysis that you guys have done, because we, you know, we're, we're doing this on, you know, trying to get rid of straws and whatnot, which, you know, in general is a good idea, but I just wonder, like, what volume, what percentage of the, of our waste stream is this making up?
So you recall that one graphic, the only one we showed tonight that gives you an indication of that, is where we showed about half of it coming from the construction and deconstruction industry, and then half from everywhere else. So things like straws, nothing as part of Phase One, or even the total of Phase One, comes close to being a significant part of what's going in the landfill. The reason for doing it is primarily to ensure that it doesn't become part of the litter and then become part of the creek burden, and ultimately the ocean burden. That's the reason, really, for, for doing this. And the focus on plastics is because those are the things that don't degrade readily, and as some of the speakers have alluded to, it's not just the micro effect of the plastic, it's that macro effect. That study that was released last Thursday in the bay, the Monterey Bay, raised a new concern about the little tiny bits-
Sure.
-less than five microns. As these plastic stuff degrade, they form smaller and smaller particles, but those only make them easier to ingest for animals. So that's really the, the reason for doing Phase One.
But I guess my question is like, I mean, is this like a, like a, do you have a guess of what percentage of our trash this is making up, or is it a pretty teeny-tiny portion?
This is a very small percentage.
Because, you know, I think-
Phase One.
Okay, yeah, I understand. But each thing we do, it creates complexity, right? And I'm just wondering, bang for buck, right? We're adding a little bit of complexity, a little bit of cost, right? That, that's where I'm trying to get at, because I also wonder, at one of my office hours, we had a few people who came and talked about this, this very topic, and one of the persons was talking about, like, well, hey, if you're gonna get rid of bags, why don't you get rid of the bags for newspapers as well? Because, you know, a lot of people just read the news online now, why do we even have, like, if we're gonna ban bags, ban bags for newspapers too, right? Just don't, just don't do it for food, because for food, you may actually, you want it to be sanitary, right? You're not gonna eat a newspaper, but you're probably gonna eat a sandwich in the bag, right? Or eat a piece of meat in the bag, or something like that. So what's, I guess, what's, why targeting the restaurants? Why not other places that use plastic bags that are just, you know, quickly thrown away?
Well, that's what we're actually finding when we do these creek cleanups and the beach cleanups. We're finding this stuff that is in Phase One. We're not finding newspapers.
I see. Because people are, the person that came in was also complaining about how the newspapers got thrown on the porch, and it'd be an indication that they're vacant, like they're on vacation or wherever, and the people would target them to get robbed and whatnot. So I'm just wondering, I'm trying to understand, like, the relative impact of, of what we're trying to do here. Okay. So I guess I just have one, and I don't even know we have to, maybe it doesn't, maybe ask staff. So I think the one thing that the Restaurant Association asked for was upon offer versus asking for a receipt. And is that something we have to make as part of the motion, or is it, you guys are fine either way? I don't, I haven't, I don't know, but how detailed is the ordinance on this topic?
Well, it is part of the Phase One ordinance. The, the receipt is part of that. So if you want to change that, you know, she'd have to either direct us to-
Okay.
...change it before the second reading or do it tonight.
Okay. I would like to make this a friendly amendment, to make it a, upon, offer versus ask. I think this accomplishes the same thing, it makes it a little bit easier for restaurants to comply, and I think in terms of enforcement, it'd probably be easier for people to just do it that way anyways. So I'm looking for the maker and seconder to either accept or reject.
Greg, I'm not sure I'm understanding it yet. You want them to, you want to have to ask, or you want them to offer?
No, it's just, I think the public speaker was saying that they prefer that we have it offered versus having to ask for the receipt. Which is very close, I mean, it's almost semantics, so it's pretty close, and from staff, it doesn't seem to matter, so why not?
Let me just ask why you did it the way you did it, because it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of difference either way.
Well, we've seen other cities do similar things, and it was sort of always couched this way, that on request, upon request, it was a way that other cities had handled similar things, not just the receipt, but other things they were trying to restrict, such as straws, have to do it on request. Frankly, we never, I at least never thought about the option that, the slight nuance that Greg was talking about. Like I say, I think it is semantics, we won't be checking to see exactly what those registered people say to the individual.
Well, I think, if I could add, I think we do not want to create a situation where a merchant is non-compliant by virtue of the fact that they didn't offer a receipt. So it's just one less hoop that a merchant would need to go through, by again, putting it on the customer in order to make that request.
Are you suggesting leaving it as to requiring that they offer, or are you saying the other way around?
The base ordinance is, it's-
Is don't give it to them?
Correct. It's really up to the customer to request it, rather than a requirement on the merchant to offer it.
Okay. So I hear what the city manager is saying, I also hear what you're saying, Greg. I think, let's leave it as it is for now. It could be altered if it doesn't turn out to work well. I think it's going to take a little training for somebody never to bring you a receipt. That's going to be somewhat odd, because we're used to it, and then signing it, and then occasionally people take it.
The only reason I mention this is because the person from the Restaurant Industry said that it was easier for them, but I don't know. I mean, I don't feel that strongly about it, but-
It's not accepted as a friendly amendment. If you can get a second, we can vote on it.
That's fine.
Do you want to propose this?
No, no, it's okay. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's like super critical. But the second thing is, I do think that idea of trying to get rid of, like, excess plastic bags doesn't make sense. So what's the plan around that to do? Is that part of, like, Phase Two or Three later on, to try to get rid of plastic bags from other areas besides just restaurants? Or grocery stores?
Well, we already have on the books a requirement for checkout at any retail that plastic bags can't be used. So we've, in past actions, before you were on the council, we took action and we have banned traditional plastic bags at checkout of any retail.
Thank you. So Phil, could I just ask for more clarification in terms of hospital? So if we pass this ordinance tonight, then you said something about a regulation for the hospitals or for the disabled?
Yeah.
How does that regulation work? I mean, the ordinance is in place, so are you gonna exempt them? Are you gonna come up with a, I'm not quite certain I understand.
So there's two issues that the hospital has raised, so take them one at a time. So one issue is patient meals, either in the room or in the emergency room, or it could be in a outpatient part of the hospital or clinic. So that issue, we've reread the ordinance coordinated with our attorney's office, and that is just not covered by the ordinance. It's not offering food to the public, right? So we'll be, if it's adopted and has its second reading, we'll be notifying the folks that spoke tonight that that's our interpretation, that it is not covered by the ordinance. And really, if you read the ordinance, there isn't anything to suggest it applies to patient rooms. The second thing they raised was these emergency supplies that, and that isn't unique to the hospital, our city has that, you know?
Yeah.
Around, and again, that is not providing meals to the public in the way that anybody would normally think about it. So we'll have to think through whether we actually need to make a regulatory, add that to the regulations to clarify that that's not covered, or whether it can just be an interpretation. But either way, there was never an intention to include these emergency supplies as being subject to this ordinance.
So with the hospitals, some of the patients, they require straws that has the bendy, the bends. How, how are you addressing that?
So we're, we're saying that the ordinance doesn't apply to-
Hospitals.
Patient meals. Patient meals. It applies to the cafeteria at the hospital, but not to patient meals, whether it be in their room, or in the emergency room, or in an outpatient part of the hospital. It just doesn't apply to patients who are eating on their own versus going to the cafeteria.
So that applies to places like senior homes, right?
I'm sorry.
Applies to senior homes? You know, the ones that have patients in there?
Um, yeah, so-
Yeah, we have eat-in gardens, we have-
Meals in individual rooms.
Sunrise.
Yeah. We'd have to think a little more about senior care, I guess, but again, the philosophy is, it wasn't meant to cover people eating a meal in their room who are like a patient. It was meant to cover public restaurants and food service facilities.
Thanks for the clarification. I just want to make sure that we're not just blanket and not looking into people who need extra help.
Okay, we are back. And so seeing no further comment, would you, we have a motion on the board, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember DuBois absent, and congratulations, and congratulations to troop 60016. Thank you for all your hard work, thank you staff for your hard work, and we're gonna move forward with this. Okay, so I'm gonna do a brief time check here. It is now just a little before 10 minutes to 10. We are gonna take up the deconstruction ordinance, and then after this, we still have the colleagues' memo. And unfortunately, the remaining two meetings that the council has scheduled before the break, both have very, very full agendas, and the, the one on the 24th has an even fuller-than-very-full agenda. So it's gonna be impractical if the discussion goes on, on the deconstruction ordinance, it's gonna be impractical for us to continue or postpone the colleagues' memo. And we're gonna have to look about, at how many folks in the public wish to speak to that, but if there's a large number, we're gonna have to make that very short so we get to it tonight. So just a heads up. So with that, we return to the salvage and deconstruction ordinance, and I have a light from Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Niss.
I'll just say one quick preamble. On page two, where you will see that it talks about the Zero Waste Plan containing 48 initiatives, and I know that you know that's, that's the direction we're heading. And I think this, this next motion that I'm about to make after I say a word or two is, I think, extremely significant. This is one of those that very few cities are doing, and I think it's going to make a huge difference. Also, on page three, where it says 40% of the waste from Palo Alto is disposed in landfills, about 19,000 tons is from construction and demolition-related projects. So I think that this is, as we move forward with this, the first one is relatively easy to understand, I think the deconstruction one is, is more difficult. So why don't I make that motion first, and then I will speak to it? So this is number three. So now we've, I'll wait till you put it up. So we have had to skip over number two, as you remember, and we've now gone over to, I think this now becomes, does it become B?
We will wait till we see it on the screen here.
It's a deconstruction ordinance. Yes, and so it's now become B. And as it says, this, this is the deconstruction ordinance, which means we adopt a resolution declaring a negative deck for the ordinance, which has to do with the deconstruction and construction materials, and then adopt the ordinance that replaces 5.24 with a new chapter 5.25 to Title V, to establish deconstruction and construction materials management requirements for demolition projects. I specifically asked if I could speak to this tonight, and I have never made a motion in honor of anybody the whole time I've been in elected office, but tonight, I would make this motion in honor of my dad, and if I get a second, I'll explain why. So I actually grew up in a recycled house. I literally did. I didn't know any different. I didn't realize that people didn't normally take other buildings down and build new buildings with them, because I was so used to that. So from a building that my father took down in Rhode Island, because I lived on the East Coast, three to four more buildings were constructed using many of those materials. The house that I ended up growing up in actually was totally recycled. I, I didn't, you know, if you grow up with that, you don't know the difference. Our furniture came from some of these old houses, and sometimes from mansions along the coast. I sound like a poor child, don't I? But this, this is truly how it happened, and I, I think many people I knew were used to doing that. So I think that was probably in early eBay. That's when you could, you know, pick up things, but somehow eBay seems glamorous, but when you talk about salvage, it doesn't. So I just want to talk about salvage for a minute, and I'd like us to think about reusing the, not using salvage anymore, talk about reusing it, talk about recycling, whatever you want to do. And so I quickly looked up the word salvage, which means to rescue, save, recover, retrieve, raise, reclaim, restore, reinstate, whatever you want to use for it. It really means taking, especially from older homes, taking out wonderful wood, doors, window sash, and so forth, and reusing them. It does cost a little more, and Phil probably could explain quickly better than I can just about what it does cost. But I think that in the end, you have made such a contribution to sustainability that, as you can tell, I'm extremely enthused about it. It will require, as you have read, that you have to have essentially a survey done of what you're going to reuse, and I think our challenge long-term is going to be, how, how can we be sure that this is actually happening? I don't think this is going to happen overnight. I, it would be nice, again, to move this along more quickly, but right now, we are talking about simply dealing with, as, as Phil calls them, hole houses. This is a house that could or might still be demolished regardless. But for all of you, have you not wondered when you see a house, you know, you've seen a house one day, and you go by it the next day, and it's absolutely gone? And you're absolutely stunned, and you think, that was such a wonderful house. Why, you know, why is it gone, first, first of all? But secondly, why didn't we save some of what was in that house? And we do now, but this is, this, I think, makes it, this, this makes it, you know, our ordinance, this makes it the way we actually are going to do it. So as I said before, I could continue on, on this vein, because this is as familiar to me as, you know, walking in the door to come to a council meeting. It is literally, as I said, how I grew up, and I know that this actually can work. So I don't intend to take the nails out of the boards myself, nor rehang the window sash, but I, I do- sash, but I do know that it all can be done. So congratulations to staff for bringing this forward, and I think it's a great part of our long-term goal for our SCAP and our sustainability plan. So, thanks.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, and I think I seconded it, in case the clerk wants to catch up. It's my pleasure to second this. I do have a few questions, which we'll go through hopefully very quickly. Just do want to comment that is, there is a cost, right? There's a significant cost to the city to administer this. It's absolutely worth doing, but we should note that. I just did a little math earlier, so if it's $18 more a square foot, and someone's building a 3,000-square-foot house, this is $54,000. So, you know, I just want us all to understand what we're expecting of people. Certainly, you know, with the donation of the materials, there's a lot of other benefits, but this is coming with cost to us and a cost to them. I do think it's appropriate. This is a huge opportunity. I want to talk, I want to get a little bit of understanding of the surveys. Who writes the surveys? And then who sees what's available? How do people know what is available, if they want the dishwasher, or the window, or the lumber? How is that going to work?
So an organization, one is currently approved, it's called the Reuse People. They're brought on board to fill out the survey and identify what's used, what can be reused, and then they take it to their facility to sell it.
Okay. Like, can we share that data? Like, is that the kind of thing that people in Palo Alto could just check the website and see what's available?
Yeah, it's not available on the website, but anyone can go to their store and purchase these materials, or oftentimes get them for free, depending on what it is.
Okay, and the store's in the East Bay, is that right?
It's in Oakland.
Yeah, okay. It just seems like there's an opportunity to be a little bit more electronic about it. I'm sure the survey is filled out online, and, you know, you can imagine someday posting it on Nextdoor, and people figuring out, you know, they can get something right here without having a big schlep across. So I'd just love to see that a little bit more. The outreach to date looks fantastic, and what you have planned looks very solid. So again, thanks for doing so much on that. I think the location seems appropriate. It's already lit and fenced. Hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's not aligned with construction hours. Is there some explanation for that?
We'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, that was page 309. And then, just in terms of timing with permits and compliance, like, they're always, you know, houses partway going through the process. When this actually goes into effect, will it apply going forward? It'll apply to anybody who hasn't, like, what's the stage at which someone will be, the first people will be subject to this?
So it's basically them applying for a demolition permit. That's what triggers it. If they've applied, then they would be so-called grandfathered in.
Okay, got it. And then just my final comment is, so I've been doing this for five months now, but I learned two words in this section, putrescible and si-chee, which I, putrescible I could figure out, but si-chee I had to look up. So just kudos to the people working on vocabulary, and we're all learning things here today. Happy to support.
Thank you. One quick question. A speaker brought up the issue about whether receipts at the reuse centers are brought back to the permitting agency. And does this ordinance currently implement that?
Yeah. A certification would have to be presented from the reuse organization, and we could then see that certification, probably through a data system.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be in person. And then, of those reuse agencies, how do we qualify those groups?
So we have a year-plus to work this out, and part of that working out is a criteria. Right now, one has been approved by the city, and that's called the Reuse People. We want more, and we'll be working on that in the next 11-plus months.
Okay. I think that mostly answers my questions. Happy to support this. Thank you for all the work on this as well.
Councilmember Tanaka.
One of the, first of all, thank you for your work on this. I think it makes a lot of sense. But one of the things that someone brought up earlier was, who uses the actual salvage material? And I just wonder, like, are we going to run into the same thing we ran into with China, where they say, oh, well, we're not going to take the plastic anymore. So we try to spend all this effort on recycling and separating stuff, and all that kind of good things, and then find out nobody actually wants it, right? So can staff speak about that in terms of, is this actually really reused? Because I know from my own home, you know, renovation and whatnot, it's really hard, even if you make a huge effort, try to reuse it, like, it's probably new construction, it's really hard to do it, right? Because it's not the right size, you know, it's not, you know, just a host, host of problems. And I was trying to get my contractor to really force me to use it, and it's really hard to get them, because it's just not quite compliant, right? And so I was, I'm interested in hearing staff's thoughts about that, and how do we make sure that this doesn't, this isn't just a bunch of, you know, plastic that we're sorting that nobody wants?
So very little of this material is going to be plastic. And it's going to, we're going to receive a certification that it went to a reuse facility. Those are in the Bay Area. And so we'll know that it's for sale in the Bay Area, and it's not valuable enough or a large enough quantity that it would be going to China.
Well, I guess my point more is just that it actually gets reused. So, I mean, do the reuse, I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with the reuse centers, but, I mean, is this stuff just piling up there, or are people actually using it, are able to use it for construction projects?
I could just add, people are using the materials, and the bottom line is that the reuse organization is coming out to the site and identifying through their survey the things that people will want to use. If they have a certain material buildup, and they're not having demand for it, they won't list that as something that should be reused.
I see. So let's say you have, like, some wood, like studs in your house, and they're all termite-ridden. We could just junk that. They don't have to try to get that reused somehow?
Yeah, we don't have a requirement that says they have to come and say certain things are going to be reused.
So if you're trying to demo a house, then, and maybe, you know, the house is kind of regularly about to fall down, like, what exactly has to be salvaged and not salvaged?
So we purposely did not state specifically what needed to be salvaged, because it's dependent on the reuse organization and what the demand is.
And so if the reuse organization says, oh, you know, this whole thing is just a lost cause, they could just junk the whole thing and be okay?
Right. So the ordinance says you have to do a survey, and if the reuse organization finds that there's nothing that can be reused in that building, then that's what it is. At least a survey was done, and it was considered.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's reasonable, because sometimes, oh, maybe it has a bunch of lead in it, or something like that, where you just can't really, or dust this, or something like that, right? You just can't really reuse it. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further lights on the board, would you vote on the motion, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember DuBois absent. Councilmember Niss, would you like to speak?
I think one suggests.
Yes, yes, you may.
This is, this is not in your ordinance, but I have a request. Many times, if I've gone by and noticed a house has gone down, I don't remember what was there. I think we should have a requirement that you put a picture of what came down, so that the neighborhood can remember what they're missing. I'm serious. I really think, there's so many times when, don't you discover that? You walk by, and there's a house gone, and you think, where, what was there?
Yeah, Google does that, right?
So with that, we move to our final action item of the night. Sorry? Want a break? Okay. Why don't we take five minutes, okay? Yeah, yeah, not longer than that.
City Council was dazzled by the Girl Scouts tonight as they presented their case against plastic straws. And I guess they do a lot more than sell cookies. They're advocates now for various causes, and they were impressed. Liz Niss was very impressed by it. But the issue comes up, is this really, I think there was only one spokesman from the restaurant industry who did speak about that. One issue, you know, is this really an intrusion on, you know, restaurants? They did bring up certain chains, Starbucks. They said, they're giving us more time, we're working on it, the industry's going to correct itself. Plastic, there's a whole list of things that will be banned in Palo Alto, plastic spoons, plastic straws, and the environmental implications that it happens in streams and in oceans to fish and wildlife. One issue that did come up, that Allison Cormac did respond to, was noted in today's Palo Alto Daily Post, and that was, the straw ban leaves out the disabled. Palo Alto, the plastic straw ban of the Palo Alto City Council is posed to pass tonight, but it doesn't include a disability exemption that other cities such as San Francisco and Seattle have included in their bans. Officials at Stanford University and Lucille Packard Hospital have asked the city for that exemption, and we believe the unique operating requirements for hospitals necessitate an exemption to accommodate the delivery of patient care systems. Now, Phil Bobel did address that. There was also two representatives, one from the Children's Hospital and one from the Palo Alto, one from Stanford, who said that they are, that there is an exemption for patients, but when it comes to, like, their cafeteria and that sort of thing, they will go along with it. They want to be included in this. But there is, of course, an exemption for patients who need that. For Mr. Bobel, when he was asked by Allison Cormac about it, he said that it wasn't there. It sounded sort of vague, but he did address it in the sense that, he said, these requirements could be written in, in the future. So that is how they addressed that. Getting back to Nancy Olson, Chief Government and Community Relations Officer at Stanford Healthcare, and Sherry Sager, who holds the same position at Lucille Packard, noted in a letter on May 23rd about this issue. The ordinance before the City Council contains an exemption for disabled persons who might need a straw in order to drink. It contains, it didn't contain one. Cormac did push the issue tonight. It said, any restaurant caught serving a plastic straw will be charged with an infraction and fined up to $250. The straw ban placed by, passed by Seattle and San Francisco specifically allow businesses to serve flexible plastic straws to patients with disabilities. In the letter to City, and officials of two Palo Alto hospitals point out that they have prioritized environmental sustainability for more than two decades by doing things such as increasing recycling and using compostable plates and silverware in their cafeterias. Paper straws didn't work, but they said that paper straws have been tried and don't work for patients who need to bend them and drink more slowly due to the comprised health, their compromised health, that they need them. They also point out that other concerns about the ordinance, such as its ban on plastic utensils and other foodware, they say the hospitals are required to have ways of feeding patients during power outages that impact dishwashers. The bendable plastic straw was invented in 1939 by Joseph B. Freeman, who was sitting in a San Francisco soda shop, watching his young daughter struggle to drink a milkshake out of a straight straw, according to a 2011 article in The Atlantic. Freeman used a dental floss and screwed, and a screw to create, so he took dental floss and a screw to create the accordion-like ridge in the middle of the straw. He patented the idea and set up a plant to make bendable straws. His first customers, however, weren't restaurants, but hospitals, because they allowed patients with limited move-
All right. It is now, five minutes is up, and we're going to regroup here, and I really do want to get through this. We have, let's see, six speakers, is that right?
We have two more.
We have two more, eight speakers. If you want to speak, please put in a card in now, because we'll cut it off. Let me ask a question of staff. So how are we going to do this? Is staff going to talk on this, or should I ask the authors of the colleagues' memo, or how should we do this?
The letter would be our suggestion.
Okay. So first, we will ask Councilmember DuBois to speak, and then Councilmember Koo. Councilmember DuBois? Seeing no Councilmember DuBois. Okay, Councilmember Koo. You have the floor.
Thank you. So Councilmember DuBois has sent a letter in, and he's asked me to read it, so I'm going to read the letter. Dear colleagues, staff, and community, I am unfortunately unable to participate in tonight's meeting. I feel strongly about the RV colleagues' memo that Lydia and I worked on, and I wanted to share some brief thoughts. Homelessness and housing. A safe parking program is not a substitute for housing. It's only a piece of the puzzle to deal with people who are on the edge of homelessness. With 129,972 homeless people and an average household size of 2.98 in California, our state is regrettably at least 43,615 homes short. We certainly need to increase our efforts to create below-market-grade housing to address this issue, but that is not the topic tonight. Tonight is to consider the plight of our brothers and sisters who live in vehicles and ensure they are safe, sanitary, and enjoyed with employment and housing placement services. Safe programs. Palo Alto may have been in the forefront in 2011, when we attempted to address this issue with parking at the Coubey Community Center, an unmanaged program with plenty of mistakes that ultimately led council to vote to ban vehicle dwelling with only Mark Berman and Karen Holman descending. A lot has changed since then. Our neighbors in East Palo Alto and Mountain View have safe parking programs. Santa Clara County provides many necessary services, including security, sanitation, employment programs, and other social services, and is willing to work in partnership with us on our program. Silicon Valley Community Foundation is convening an intercity work group to promote regional cooperation on this issue. Many cities have paved the way for us, including Santa Barbara, Seattle, San Diego, Monterey, San Jose, and Los Angeles. I've attached a memo from the Homeless Policy Research Institute in US, at USC, that summarizes the goals, costs, and scopes of the safe parking programs. Please read it. The biggest challenge is finding a space and an insurance rider. We have suggested seeding our program with a city-owned property. We are not wed to any particular location that is critical, but it is critical that we seed the program. Any single lot does not need to have intensive use. In Santa Barbara, the largest lot supports 15 spots. Many are much smaller. Three churches are willing to start in Palo Alto. If we declared that four vehicles per church could be considered incidental use, as Mountain View has, and therefore not require a temporary use permit, we could move forward immediately. By providing a managed, safe, overnight parking program and seeding a location, we can demonstrate low impacts in order to recruit businesses and organizations to support a few overnight spots each. Other city ordinances also help point the path towards effectiveness by requiring vehicle registration and a driver's license, liability insurance, targeting low-income people and requiring, targeting low-income people and requiring participation in case management services. These programs are generally run with a nonprofit partner for a modest budget. San Diego provides 78 spots for $55,000 annually. Item number five in the memo also calls out the need to work with our partner to survey Palo Alto vehicle dwellers and understand the vehicle dwelling population in order to properly understand the problem. Other cities see multiple categories of issue. People who sleep in their cars, employees, contractors, and students, rented oversized vehicles, oversized vehicles in general. We may want to consider prioritizing services for those whose most recent permanent resident was Palo Alto, particularly those with children. We should encourage employers, developers, and schools to provide safe parking for employees, contractors, such as construction workers, and students, including commuters. Rented oversized vehicles likely require specific regulations and oversight. Goal tonight is to start the process. However, the modest goal tonight is not to debate details about a potential program, it's simply for council to commit to starting the discussion and understand what a safe parking program would look like here. With nonprofit partners, we can create a program with limited staff involvement and a huge return on investment. a huge return on investment. The value of helping a person get back to a stable life far exceeds a modest investment of time and money. Please provide your enthusiastic support for a well-designed Palo Alto safe parking program. Sincerely, Tom DuBois." And since he's spoken, I basically agree with everything he said, so I'm not going to say anything.
Thank you. We'll now go to the public, and we have eight speakers, and you will have two minutes each. Patty Rigar.
Hi, I'm Patty Rigar, and I'm just proudly, I'm on the Human Relations Commission, but I'm representing myself today, because we're having our retreat, and we're going to pick our issues. But this is a really poignant one for me, because I think that we all know, we all see vans and cars, and I've taught individual children who have lived in cars so that they can come to our Palo Alto schools. And you also heard some of you, when the Stanford students were talking about how a lot of them are living in their cars because of the housing there. I just think that this is a step, and I'm really willing to help at whatever we can to get people to be in a safe environment, because if they can sleep well, then they're going to think well. And I think that's an important one, is you can't, if you can't sleep and you're always scared, you can't make, you can't think as well without a good night's sleep. So that's what I want to offer people at our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Edie Keating.
I hope you'll move forward to study this. There's such a, many impacts that are on the people who are living in vehicles, but I think for many of them, they would be unsheltered homeless if they did not have the option of living in their vehicles. But some of the impacts that are really difficult to them, that I'm aware of, of living in their vehicles, is no electricity at night. And so if there's some way, you know, and who wants to run a noisy generator at night? So, you know, and it depends on what your vehicle is and so on. But I think, you know, one of the things I hope that this, these pilots will explore are, especially if there's going to be, you know, on a lot like the Los Altos Treatment Site lot, where you might do some improvements, is, you know, would you want to make it something a little bit more KOA, where you have some ability to provide them with electricity at night? Because that would make a huge difference. Another, other issues are just, you know, the sanitation issues, and the Santa Barbara program provided, you know, roving kind of maintenance porta potty type thing that would, you know, clean the tanks but go to where the vehicles were. So if you want to provide this, and I also like that you're looking to provide this with a prioritization to people who are lower income, I think that's a very good criteria to provide better services that way. So I like all the different things I've been hearing to consider around this and the memo that Councilmember Koo read. So I'm going to stop talking, but I think this is worth studying, and there are many ways it could go.
Thank you. Stephen Lee.
Good evening, Stephen Lee, Human Relations Commissioner. I'm here speaking on my own behalf. I want to begin by thanking Councilmembers DuBois and Koo for authorizing, for authoring this colleagues' memo. The issue of homelessness and individuals living in their vehicles is an issue of critical importance to both Palo Alto and our region. As evidenced by last year's National Citizens Survey, the public wants our city to start addressing this issue. We have both the moral imperative and the public's support to do so, and I hope the city thinks so too, and devotes the necessary staff time to begin this important work. It's long past time that we begin addressing these issues. When I joined the commission back in 2017, this was certainly an issue then. I remember Councilmember DuBois asking me and other applicants to the commission what we were planning on doing on this. It was that same summer that the city received a record number of complaints about the RVs along El Camino. At our joint city council HRC study session that same year, a majority of the council at the time told the HRC that this was an issue. When I asked them that the council refer this item to the HRC or to the staff, it chose not to do so. Later in December of 2017, the commission received testimony from our deputy city manager and police department about the status of the RVs in Palo Alto. Since then, this issue has been stuck in the muck, at least in Palo Alto. When asked about the issue, there's been reluctance by staff to revisit it, following the city's failure to find a solution back in 2011, and staff has understandably overworked and focused on other priorities. In the meantime, we've seen other neighboring cities like Mountain View, EPA, and San Jose take the lead in addressing this issue. While I'm encouraged by the steps that the council will hopefully take today, I want to remind the council that this is just the beginning. Even if we are successful with this effort, we are only addressing the symptoms of a much larger housing crisis. If we are serious about helping residents who are homeless and leaving in their vehicles, we need to do more than just provide safe parking lots and access to services. We need to address the root cause and get serious about housing. It's time that Palo Alto followed the lead of neighboring cities and gets serious about the issue of homelessness and living in RVs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Herb Borak.
I'd like to share with you some history of the programs for homelessness and people at risk of homelessness. For example, there's a rotating shelter, Hotel de zinc, goes for a month at a time at individual churches. And when the program was set up, it was set up as temporary use permits for each of those locations, which meant it was required each year, an application to get the temporary use permit, given opportunity for the neighbors, if there had been changed circumstances, to make comments before it was awarded. Now, I don't know if that's been kept up as the organizations have changed and merged and taken over, but that's still the way it should be done. And in those use permits, it required people to not be in the neighborhood during the daytime. It went from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Another issue is when the Opportunity Center decided to be on Encina Avenue, and they said, "Well, how can they make their neighbors, the Town and Country Village, and Palo Alto Medical Foundation, happy?" And what they did was get to convince the council to prohibit overnight parking on Encina Avenue where the Opportunity Center is located. So at the very place where there are services for homeless people and for people at risk of homelessness, you can't park an RV overnight. Thank you.
David Barron.
I support allowing people who live in their cars to do so safely within the city of Palo Alto and to be treated as members of our community. We're seeing more people living in their cars because of the housing shortage in the Bay Area. This shortage is the result of zoning laws that have been used by local governments to keep out people who are viewed as undesirable. Laws to ban living in cars, like the one Palo Alto passed in 2013, are just another step along these lines. We should treat everyone as welcome here. We shouldn't say that those who work low-wage jobs in our area shouldn't live here. In the long term, that means building a lot more housing, but that doesn't help in the short term. So I support developing a program to provide services for those who are living in cars and allowing them some places to do so. I'd also support reversing the 2013 ban. However, I'm concerned about some aspects of this proposal that appear to push these members of our community geographically to the edges of our city, and also concerned about the suggestion in Councilmember DuBois's letter to consider limiting services based on the last place of permanent residence. But overall, I would support this study. Thank you.
Kelsey Baines.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Baines. I'm really encouraged to hear lots of positive comments from the community about establishing a safe parking lot for Palo Alto residents who are living in their vehicles, and I'm commending the Palo Alto City Council for taking this on. The increase in visible vehicle homelessness that we're seeing in our community is a symptom of a dire housing shortage that is pushing more and more people onto the margins and more and more, or forcing more and more people to make hard choices about how to survive and how to access opportunity. So I support the broad goals of this memo, but would urge the council to eliminate Recommendation Five, which suggests that the council should be using income to determine whether people should be eligible for services. And I would just caution the council that income is not the greatest metric for homeless service need. So you may see people who have relatively high income but owe a lot of child support or owe restitution, and those people may need a lot of case management service, but may not necessarily be a low income if you're just going based on gross incomes. And I just think that you want to leave those determinations up to the professionals, the service providers, who are the ones who are going to be making the determination about who needs these services the most. So I would just encourage you to leave this clinical decision up to the clinicians and not try to make it at the city government level. Rely on your contractors to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Holzmer.
Good evening. I'll try to make my comments short. I'd first like to take a moment just to thank Councilmember Koo and DuBois for putting this important issue in front of the council. Since it's, since this issue was last discussed in 2013, it's been too long for this issue to come back to this council for discussion. I came tonight to support the colleagues' memo because of the RV parking issue, and I think it makes a great deal of sense to understand better the whole issue, especially in certain neighborhoods. I live in one of those neighborhoods near California Avenue where RV parking has grown. I believe it's time to find out the needs of these dwellers who live in these RVs, and also find out more about what their needs in the future might be. Even if you don't like the idea of designing a special RV location, which is suggested in one of the, Number Three, I think all of the rest of it has a lot of legitimate merit, understanding who these people are and their impacts. We care about all our residents, even our residents that live in RVs, and we want to protect them and make sure they're safe. But to do that, we need information. We need to know more about them, who they are, why they've come here, those type of things. And I think this colleagues' memo does that, so I support it. Thank you.
And our final speaker will be Shani Kleinhaus.
I go to a lot of city council meetings in this area, and I hear this discussion come up a lot, and I am supportive of providing safe parking for people who live in vehicles. In San Jose, they look at churches and they look at libraries, and they just opened some pilots in library areas for families. And we have families living in RVs. There is some on East Meadow Circle. And I think that we need to look at that and provide for them, but I don't think that we need to look at the Baylands as a place to do that. They should be integrated with us. The kids should be able to go to school. The dogs and the cats should not go into the Baylands to intimidate wildlife. And I encourage you to not consider the Baylands as one of the sites, and instead really focus on churches, libraries. Even if one community center did not work, maybe we can do it better. Thank you.
We now return to council for questions, comments, and motions. Councilmember Koo, do you have a specific motion language that you wish to make?
Yes, I would actually. I'd just like to move the recommendation that is in our colleagues' memo, and instead of, and for, and change the address in Number Three to read instead, instead of 1237 San Antonio to 2000 Gang Road as the first seeded location. I understand the Los Altos Water Treatment Plant is actually being used for the green waste construction and deconstruction sorting and storage, so they're using that site. And it's in our, it's actually in the staff report for tonight's deconstruction and construction ordinance.
Did you say staff recommended Gang Road?
If you read in the research.
Okay, cool, thanks. Okay, so is there a second? I'll second it.
Thank you.
Care to speak further to your motion?
I think many of the speakers already spoke about it. You know, it's something that we do need to address in our community. I don't want it to go under the rug. And I think one of the things that I really want to make sure is that many of the people are taken care of, given the chance and opportunity to get a job, and also to find stable housing. Also, very encouraging, you know, the Silicon Valley Community Foundation did have a, they're actually having community meetings with elected officials and really trying to resolve this problem about homelessness, and one of them is the RV dwelling. They have engaged with Live Moves, Project We Hope, and other organizations. Live Moves actually says that they, of last year, out of 89% of families, 73% of individuals completed their interim shelter program successfully and returned to stable housing, equipped with the life skills and competencies needed to maintain long-term self-sufficiency. And that's what we're hoping to do with this program. But we do have to address this issue.
Okay, thanks. So I'll speak briefly to it, too. So first of all, Councilmember Koo, this says, recommends either refer to policy and services and/or create a subcommittee or task force. I think we need to be a little more specific than that tonight. So would you be okay with saying, "Refer to policy and services"?
Yes.
Okay. So can we remove that part? And just, just to craft program details. The second thing that I want to make sure that I understand with the intent of your motion here is that it says, "Such a program should include elements such as," okay, which, as I interpret it, means gives policy and services broad latitude to investigate and decide on a program and, and to consider these things, but not necessarily any one of these be included, because people have raised questions about, you know, number, you know, Number Five or Number Three or so, so forth. And so I want to make sure that we are not constraining policy and services, say, "You have to do Number B," or something like that. Is that, is that?
It's left broad, because this is a discussion. They can even add...
Broad discretion to policy and services?
Right.
That's, okay.
And then, you know, if policy and services wants to add more stuff in, I mean, it's open to discussion. We're trying to have a dialogue.
Okay. So with that understanding, yes, I'm pleased to second it. You know, I think we should take this up. I think we should give, it's a very complicated subject. I think we should give Paul and Service, Policy and Services broad latitude on what they want to propose or not propose on this, on this issue with staff. Okay. I have lights from, I believe Councilmember Fine was first, followed by Councilmembers Niss and Cormack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for speaking tonight, and thank you to Councilmembers DuBois and Koo for bringing this up. I'm happy to support this. Have a couple of questions and points. I guess the thing I start with here is that there clearly is, I don't like using the squishy phrase, "quality of life," but I think there is a quality of life issue here where folks are worried about issues such as parking, sanitation, bicycle safety, you know, there's a whole range of issues this has caused, and the problem has certainly gotten worse. There's a big but to that that I really just can't avoid, which is the housing crisis, right? When we meet, 6% of our, you know, very low-income housing, this is what happens. It's also, I'll note, happening in nearby cities. I'm sure many of you, if you drive up and down the peninsula, you see this. This is not a Palo Alto-only problem. And I'll note, I think tomorrow night, the Mountain View Council is taking up further, they're a little further along the road towards this, but they're taking up action which may ban the parking of oversized vehicles, I think something like seven by 22 feet on their city streets. If that happens, it means RVs in Palo Alto will probably be driving to Sunnyvale in Palo Alto. So, or sorry, RVs in Mountain View will be driving to Sunnyvale in Palo Alto. So our problem could get worse, but I think it speaks to the regional nature of this. I think the one area where I have some questions, but I think the mayor's statement about just broad discretion to policy and services to look at is Letter E, one about the distinguishing between high and low-income individuals, and then managing parking on streets. And I'll just bring it up. So on the means testing issue, I also wonder whether income is kind of the best indicator of what we're looking to do. I think there may be some situations where we, if this program gets off the ground, we don't have enough spots, and we do have to ration who can use them and access those services. I just don't know if income is really the best measure of that. It may be something else. And so I just want to bring that up. And so I just want to bring that up there. And then managing the parking on streets, once spaces are available. I'll just be clear, I guess, personally, I would not be willing to support, and I know we're not there at all, but not willing to support just, you know, outright banning RVs from parking on our city streets. I think there are other problems afoot, and we need to keep that in check or in our thoughts. Some nice things I really appreciate in here, Councilmember Koo and DuBois, you guys are focusing on partnerships, whether it's with the county, Project We Hope, faith institutions, Adobe, et cetera. That's great. Also note in the letter Councilmember DuBois sent us that the focus of the programs in the Los Angeles region have been about employment and housing services as kind of the most desired and successful outcomes. And I would say, in a funny way, it was interesting to read the range of outcomes from different cities there, how successful they had been in permanently housing folks who enter these programs, and that may be a metric for us to look at. You know, if we get 100 people entering this program within six months, are 10%, 80%, 100% of them housed in other situations? And that may be something for us to look at. Quick question to staff. There was a mention in Councilmember DuBois's letter about incidental use, if there's like four or less RVs parking in a church. Can you just give us some color on that quickly?
Good evening, councilmembers. In regards to your question, are you curious if that's something that we would want to allow or if it's something that's allowed today? What exactly are you curious about?
Yeah, so what is allowed today? What do we describe as incidental use? And then what kind of changes Councilmember DuBois is alluding to? I just wasn't quite.
So we have looked into this question a little bit, kind of thinking with Mountain View as an example, where they did allow to have four vehicles parking on church parking lots, for example, without needing to get an additional permit. Looking at our code, we don't believe that's the case today, that churches would be permitted to have that use. And so what we might want to do after Policy and Services takes a look is consider what kind of changes in the code would need to be made to allow, whether it is a certain number of vehicles and what kind of sites those would be allowed, whether it's a zoning issue or a permit that would be required to allow folks to have that use or something. And Mountain View did, I believe, make a change to allow that to happen. So it was a pilot project they launched so that they could test if the churches could handle the capacity of having the vehicles park there and manage those overnight.
Okay. That seems something like our Policy and Services committee should explore and come back to us on. Otherwise, happy to support this, and thank you to the authors for bringing it up.
Councilmember Niss.
Well, I have to say it's a little deja vu. We took this up, I think I'm going to look at Molly, five years ago, six years ago.
You were well underway in your discussions, which lasted for quite a long time when I came to work here in 2012 or 2011. So it was quite a while ago, and it lasted for several years. We worked on it. It was a challenge.
So not to disparage or discourage anyone from getting involved in this, but we spent a lot of time during the period of time Molly just mentioned, trying to put together a plan of some kind. It had to do primarily at that point with cars that were parking on the street overnight. I don't remember as many RVs, I think primarily then it was cars. We tried very hard to use the churches. As I recall, I think we polled something like 50 churches, and there weren't any churches who wanted people to stay in their parking lot for any length of time. Also, it turned out there was a real concern about, you know, plumbing facilities and so forth. So we actually passed an ordinance, as I recall, banning cars on the street. And then, remind me what happened next, Molly?
So council provided for a long lead time before enforcement, and during that time, we had, did have discussions with some of the legal advocacy groups that support unhoused persons. And the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal issued a decision during our long education period that made the legal environment much more difficult for that type of ordinance, and the council withdrew it.
So of course, we withdrew, we withdrew the ban. We also looked very hard, and I would suggest we do this again, look at the Santa Barbara program. They have a good program, but they use primarily huge parking lots, but people get to go in at a certain time and they have to be out every morning. So that's a big change from people whose RVs are parked on a certain street for a long period of time. I think this is a really tough problem, and I know that Mountain View has said, you know, no more RVs on their streets. I think they'll get pushback from human rights groups, they'll get pushback from the courts, and they'll get pushback from the ACLU. It's very difficult. One of the, we have not done enough housing. We acknowledge that. And especially, we haven't done enough low-income housing, which, since we're about to do our first one in like 10 years. So I think part of this is our own doing. At the same time, though, it's very real, and we really must, must deal with it yet again. So I think moving it to our committee where we can really spend some time on it is a positive way to go. But I don't want us to be taking this up and thinking that there's any easy answer whatsoever. There simply isn't.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you. I have a fair number of questions. First of all, where's 2000 Gang Road?
That's, I believe, the site where our temporary fire station is located during the reconstruction of Stations Three on Embarcadero and Newell.
Okay, so out like by the Baylands Athletic Center?
Athletic Center, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I, listening to the mayor and saying, okay, yes, everything, they'll be able to cover a lot of things, I just have a few concerns about some of the things that are listed in here. And I was wondering why, for example, it doesn't just say private in like B, which would cover, instead of saying commercial lots, that would cover, you know, private spaces that could include churches? Is that something that the maker and the secondor would be willing to modify?
I see a nodding from Councilmember Koo, and I'm okay with it, too.
Slightly broader, okay.
Convert the word "commercial" in item B to "private."
Okay, that just gives us a little bit more. Very happy to see County of Santa Clara. One more concern and then a suggestion. Let me go with the suggestion first. I mean, the write-up of this, of the colleague's memo includes information about outreach and learning more, but it's not in the motion, and I actually think it's the most important thing. I think many of us have ideas or anecdotes, based on who we know or what we read. But I actually think the most important thing is to understand, you know, who is living in their cars now and what are the services that they might like. I don't understand A because I don't feel like we have vehicle dwelling management. So is there something that we're expanding? I don't quite understand A, what identify and determine interest in expanding vehicle dwelling management means.
If we deleted the word "expanding," would that, would that help?
Yes. Is that, is A basically just saying we're going to go ask the nonprofits if they would like to work with us?
A is just asking the county for support, for nonprofits for support, and see what kind of services they can provide to help us out and assist us. I think you were at the meeting at the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, and so that, so many of the things that they suggested, we want to ask them to see what they're willing to provide, including funding.
D makes total sense, yeah. No, no, no question about D. I'm really more curious about A, which would be sort of like the reason that we're doing this. What I'd like to see at the beginning is asking staff to, you know, get a better understanding of who is living in their vehicles.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, basically, just kind of doing a survey of who is out there, you know.
Okay. I feel like that's missing from the motion, and I don't know if we should add it or if we should just leave Policy and Services to address this with their.
Well, that was what we were hoping for, that Policy and Services.
There's just a lot of specificity in here for something, so, okay. Space. And then I guess I'd just say again on E, which was five, I think, I'm concerned about that until and unless we understand more. So I just, I'm not comfortable with E.
So on E, a lot of the services is going to be coming from county. And oftentimes, those services are going to be geared towards lower income to help them. So we want to make sure that the lower-income are given the opportunity to get health care or to get dips on services first in order to help them find a job, to help them get into stable housing. I mean, and the higher income, it's a priority that we have to kind of look at also, and hopefully we can also vet it out at Policy and Services. But it's also something that I would like to find out more from the community service workers, how they go about doing that. It's not really for us to determine, it's for them to tell us. We have a lot to learn from them, the professionals.
That makes total sense. This just assumes that there are high-income individuals, and we don't know that to be the case.
We don't.
And it extends it to changing parking, which I don't really think is, is part of this, right? Changing parking on streets.
No. It's not intending to change things. There's really.
Well, it sort of actually does say that.
That's my concern, yeah. I'd personally be more comfortable if E was removed. So are the maker and the secondor willing to consider that? Again, it doesn't limit Policy and Services.
Are you taking off?
Councilmember Cormac is proposing to excise bullet E. Maybe I'll comment on that out of order here, which is, as I read it, it was, you know, consider sort of financial resources as one of the elements as we consider how to proportion services and this kind of thing. I guess I wouldn't want to require Policy and Services to come up with a policy that considered that at this point. So I think that's fair. At the same time, I wouldn't want to prohibit them from doing that either if they get through this and say, yeah, actually, this is something that makes sense. So, so long as the presence or absence of E doesn't tie Policy and Services' hands in considering this stuff, then I'm okay with it either there or not there.
I think, I think, I've said it earlier, that this doesn't tie anything. It's an exploration, and it's a learning experience for all of us to find out what is, what we can, what is appropriate by the professionals. I'm definitely not a professional at this, and I'm looking to learn.
So I think what I heard you say is you don't want to take off E. Is that correct?
Yes, I would prefer to leave it in just so that we can learn more about it.
Would you, your proposed amendment is not accepted as a friendly one? How would you like to proceed?
So I'd like to make an unfriendly amendment, then, to remove.
Remove E.
Item E from the motion.
Is there a second? That is seconded by Vice Mayor Fine. Would you care to speak further to your motion?
Just briefly, I just, I think it makes assumptions based on data we don't have yet, and I think it extends this from, you know, helping people who are currently living in their cars to changing parking regulations on streets. I'm just not comfortable with that.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Just briefly, I share Councilmember Cormac's concerns on the income issue. It could be an indicator, but I'm not convinced it is, and I think there could be other ones, whether it's, you know, job occupancy, whether you're a nurse at Stanford, whether you're a construction worker, I just don't know. And as I mentioned earlier, the managing parking on streets, that's a little worrying to me, and I'm just not there yet.
Councilmember Niss.
So I, what I'm worried about with this, and I'll support removing this one, I'm afraid much of this is very prescriptive. And I won't attempt to change the rest of it. I think it's getting late, and we'll ferret it out in committee. But for example, encouraging the county to explore funding assistance, we have done that every year since I've been back on the council. So I think getting too prescriptive, prescriptive means that you're going to rule out some possibilities in the future.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on the amendment, please? And that passes four to two with Councilmembers Koo and Tanaka dissenting. Okay. Are there further, further comments to the main motion? In fact, you still have the floor. Are you done? Or you wish to comment further?
The only, the only thing that I feel is missing, but again, returning to your earlier comments, it can be included, is, you know, understanding, you know, getting better information about the people who are currently living in their vehicles and, you know, their interests and needs. I feel like that's missing. But I understand your point that it can be addressed in Policy and Services. So I'll leave it aside.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also want to thank Councilmember, well, Tanaka for bringing this forward. It's a big issue, and I think it's a really hard problem. So I don't think there can be any easy answers to the questions that this brings up. So I want to make a friendly amendment to this, which is, you know, we have, we have, you know, our HRC, we have our PTC that, you know, have asked us as councils to look at this stuff more, in more detail. And I think instead of referring this to Policy Services directly, I think what might be good is, because there's so many hard questions in this, and I think it needs a lot of community input, because, you know, there's a lot of trade-offs that have to be made. And I think if this comes directly to Policy Services without being really vetted by the public, I'm really worried about the amount of public support we'll get for this. Now, it's really late at night, it's almost 11 o'clock, we have a lot of stuff on our dock and our agenda. You know, council time is really scarce, even Policy and Services' time is really scarce. And I think, you know, our commissions have been very eager and interested in trying to tackle some of these hard issues. And I think for these kind of hard issues that are, that are especially challenging and that require a lot of community outreach, I think this is a good problem for them to work on versus us trying to solve it, because we have so much stuff that we're already trying to solve, that I don't think we would be able to do as good of a job as they could do it first. They could kind of run with it first, try to really understand all the kind of bugs and issues with the program, really try to like refine it before it comes back to Policy and Services. So that, by the time it comes to Policy and Services, it's kind of more baked than where it is right now. I think there are a lot of good ideas on here, but there's a lot of questions that I'm worrying about that I don't think, you know, if it comes to Policy and Services, that we're able to answer. So my amendment, hopefully friendly amendment, is that before it goes to Policy and Services, I think it should go through our HRC and Planning Commission or PTC, and they should kind of get together and figure out like what's, you know, how to, how to really make this work, and then come to Policy and Services so that when we're looking at it, it's more efficient. We, we have something that's more fully figured out. And then, you know, come back to council. Because I think by skipping the Planning Commission and HRC, we are not using all the tools that we have available, especially for a problem that's especially hard. So looking for the maker and the secondor to see if they would accept it.
Councilmember Koo, it's your motion.
So why human relations and planning and transportation? Wouldn't it be one or the other?
Well, I think it's both, because there's, there's planning questions, right? There's obviously parking is involved, right? We're taking, we're looking to use city land. I think the HRC is important because, you know, they're trying to deal with some of these societal issues, right? And so I think, I think the combination of the two is really important to try to hash this out. I don't think it's just a pure, you know, zoning issue, right? Thus, it's not just planning, it's not just a PTC issue, and it's certainly just not a pure HRC issue. It's a combination of both of them. And I would, I would like us to try to leverage our commissions to really, you know, put the best brains on this, who have a lot more time than we have on council, to figure out this issue. And that way, we're more fully informed. They could work with staff, they could kind of figure out like what makes sense. And then again, you know, we have, I think this is a really important issue. It's also, I think, fairly contentious. So, you know, it's late, we have very few public speakers tonight, especially on an issue this contentious. And I would think that this needs a lot more airtime, a lot more time for us to vet out all these kind of potential issues so that, so that it can actually happen. Because otherwise, I think, you know, I think Councilmember Niss was talking about how they spent years trying to make this happen. they spent years trying to make this happen, and it's hard. So I think it's better for us to flush it out versus trying to just guess as to what's we're supposed to do.
You know, I mean, I don't really mind so much, but I don't want it to take years again. So, I mean, this is a matter that is right now in front of us, and I really want this to move a little bit more speedily than it did before. So if you put a timeline in there, you know... Can I ask staff, how do you see the process? You know, it's going to, if it goes to HRC and PTC, how does the procedure work?
Well, yes, that's a very good question. I think ultimately, the trade-off, if that's the appropriate term that council is wrestling with, is how much clarity to provide to the commissions versus what could be defined at the committee level. And so I think ultimately, that's the balancing act that we're talking about, and whether the better venue for both defining the dimensions of a program as well as gaining community input is better with the commission versus the committee.
The commission versus, I'm sorry, what was the last?
The Policy and Services Committee. So I think that's the real question ultimately that I think you're wrestling with.
As you deliberate, I, yeah, I think Policy and Services is the right place. I think, I have confidence that they'll do a good job. The Planning and Transportation Commission, I really like to see those guys do more planning and transportation, especially transportation these days, so I'm not sure that that one... And the Human Relations Commission, I think, you know, I think it's one possibility, but I sort of side with the city manager. I think Policy and Services will do a good job, so I'm not going to support the amendment.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. It's just, I think with such a broad policy, it's more for the Policy and Services, the council members would have a better idea of what needs to be asked and...
And it will come back to council, and there will be, you know, lots of time for public participation, and I think Policy and Services will do some of that, too. So your motion, your amendment is not accepted as a friendly amendment. Would you like to seek a second?
I'll second it, Greg, if we just restrict it to HRC. I think, and let me just explain myself really quickly, you and I both served on PTC, I actually do kind of agree with the mayor. I'm not sure PTC is the right place for this, there's a few small interactions with zoning and stuff like that, but actually not that much as I envisioned this. But HRC, if I want to step back for a moment, tonight, all of us are debating this, our community has provided input, and who's not here tonight are the folks who are living in these vehicles. And I wonder if the HRC could play a role both in surveying and checking in with those folks, and doing the work Councilmember Cormac was talking about, engaging with our community more broadly. So...
And so, just to add, why not the PTC?
I just, if I put on my PTC hat again, I'm not sure what value I would have added. That's kind of what I'm thinking. And also, just in terms of getting to what Councilmember Kuhn was saying, we don't want this to go out there for way too long, so, you know, one commission is probably preferable to two. So that's...
The challenge I see is that, you know, if, I mean, it has a lot to do with parking, right? Because if you think about whether the complaints, we've heard about this, it's largely about parking. And, you know, sometimes people joke that the PTC is the Parking and Traffic Commission, but, because that's all they talk about. And so I hear what you're saying, but it's also related to that as well. So...
Let's resolve this first, I mean...
So I just think I'm trying to split the difference here. I think sending it to two commissions is a little onerous, but sending it to one makes sense. And to me, HRC speaks up a little bit.
So is there a motion here with the maker and a secondor, or not?
It doesn't seem like it.
Okay, you don't have a second. Seeing no second, the motion, the amendment? Councilmember Niss, did you wish to speak?
No, I don't need to.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on the motion? And that passes five to one with Councilmember Tanaka dissenting, and Councilmember DuBois not present. Thank you very much. Thank you to the public for staying with us this late to do this.
Yeah, I don't mind HRC, it's just that...
Is there any state and federal legislation update?
We do not.
We do not? Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements, would anybody like to make one? Councilmember Kuhn.
So last week, I asked for updates on the Senate bills and Assembly bills. Could you try to get that to us, just to know what...
Will do. I know that our lobbyist is heavily involved with working through the budget legislation that's currently in place, so I know that's been a focus of theirs, but we'll do, we'll follow.
Thank you.
Councilmember Niss.
So I was at the A-Bag meeting last Thursday, where I thought they had a terrific panel on housing. The mayor of Fremont was there, the mayor of Burlingame, Dave Rabbit, who is from Sonoma County, and one other person whose name I didn't hear clearly. But Burlingame has done, I don't know if any of you are familiar with what's going on in Burlingame, I wasn't, but apparently, they have a, I hesitate to use "fire," given what's happened in the last year, but their housing program is clearly on fire. They are putting in enormous amount of housing. The same in Fremont, where they're doing a great deal along the transit corridor, especially with TOD development. And then Dave Rabbit, whom you probably know, also spoke about what they're doing in Sonoma County about rebuilding, and the fact that they are handling the materials and what could happen very differently. That one of the things they discovered is embers tend to be one of the main causes of fire. So clearly, that means that you construct a roof differently. But I don't know if this was taped or not, I couldn't tell, I couldn't see a camera, but if any of you are interested, the Burlingame and the Fremont housing programs that are going on right now were really fascinating. So just wanted to pass that along. They also had it in Oakland, by the way, on a beautiful day, and Lake Merritt was just sparkling. So it was fun to see what's going on in Oakland.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, we are adjourned.